10:00 PM and we're going to call this workshop of the Louisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. First up on the agenda is discussion of the consent and regular agenda items. So let's go ahead and open up our packets to that, council.
Mayor, I'm gonna, we're gonna have to pull item number 10 and I need to say something else.
So item D1, public hearing, consideration of ordinance of the city council for the Texas Enterprise Zone Program. Questions, comments?
Is that something we initiated or did they initiate that?
I believe they reached out to us and it meets the requirement and so we want some full support. It's nothing that the city has to put any money towards the state will. It needs some qualifications.
We had two at once, I just thought maybe that was.
There's a deadline, so they have a deadline that they have to meet. So yes.
We've done this before with this same project.
We've done it for phase one of Caliber, this is an expansion to Caliber.
Okay, that makes sense then.
Item 2, Texas Enterprise Zone Program. Item 3, special use permit for manufacturing, the Woodhills. Item 4, zoning ordinance to rezone 10.207 acres of Lady Tesla Avenue and Essex Boulevard. Questions, comments? Do you want to speak back? I think we're good once door shut.
Where is Richard? There he is, there's Richard.
So what was, what's the potential uses that could have gone here with the previous zone?
The current zoning on this side is multifamily 3, so primarily multifamily uses. But since it's a PD, that's just one component of the zoning. The concept plan is the other component that regulates the location of buildings, streets, and other access points.
And Mayor, I did want to point out that in open, we're gonna do a full presentation. I believe the developers also are gonna be doing a presentation and then obviously if there's any residents, they'll be there.
And I appreciate you coming out here, Mr. Stanley. It's very helpful to help us work through this.
Thank you, Mayor.
So this is the 10 acres though?
Yep. So that's the 10 acre one on item 4. Item 5 is the 3.45 acres.
Right.
So can I, let me clarify also, so the 10 acres on item 1, on the first item is the rezoning and then, but it's also an amendment of the concept plan, which is 50.562 acres, which is later in the caption. So the first item is doing a rezoning, but also the concept plan amendment, which is treated like a rezoning.
And the concept plan amendment is for, doesn't include the 3.4?
It does not.
Well, that was broken down. That was broken down at PNC.
That would be in item number 5.
It's item 5. Questions on this one? We're gonna have a review of that as well?
Yes, well, you may see some.
Save it for open.
Yeah, it'll be in open. You'll also see some of the information might be duplicated, but we're making sure we have that for each item so that if the residents want to look at it after the fact, they'll get all that information in the video.
Thank you. Item 6, amending ordinance 0428-22-DON, the realm sub-district. Item 7, consent agenda, approval minutes. Item 8, master services agreement, task order number 1.
So explain this, so 90% of the meters got changed out, correct? And so what's there now? What, so this component that has to go on there, is it pulling something off and putting something back on?
It's just changing the register on it. So it, the meter is, it's not like we have sunk cost, we have sunk costs, but we're using those, we're still able to utilize those. So it's not like lost.
No, I get that, but how much, how big a deal is it for them to do what they need to do?
You mean the work, the work amount? That would be inherent.
So it's, yeah, it's not a lot of work to change the register, but the other thing we're having them do is do our lead and copper survey as well. So that adds a little bit of labor, a little bit of effort per meter to check those. There's about 10,500 of those they have to check.
And what about the 10% that don't have the?
So we, so we had actually put a pause on the meter replacement so that when they go to those, they will replace both the meter and the register.
Okay, great.
How long do they anticipate that's gonna take?
They said four to six months.
Okay.
It's still pretty good, huh? 10,000?
Yeah, that's pretty speedy. Item 9, professional services agreement with HDR. That's combined pump station and Clearwell project. Item 11. Item 10, we're gonna pull for Councilman Kate. Item 11 is the Fries and Nichols landscape and trail design for Euphem Parkway medians. Item 12, amendment to the existing professional services agreements.
I did want to point out on this one that this isn't changing, we previously brought to you guys a supplemental appropriation to add to this project. This isn't actually increasing the total amount of the project. We have money within the budget, but this was one of the components of that issue we had with the groundwater on our construction site. So this is just changing this one contract because it's outside of our core contract, which is our contract, our general contractor.
Item 13, furniture for Tilla McFadden. Again, this was in the core budget.
Was that about what we expected or is that?
Is it out of that?
Yes.
It actually came in a little under budget, but, oh, that's awesome.
I always love to hear that.
Yes.
Just a little.
It came with all the screws rotting already put together and not gonna make police officers put together their desks.
Was that fire parts job? And then we have Valley Vista and Poiter Street drainage, that's item to F10, but if there's any questions on that, we'll take that outside of that or refusal. Item 14, consideration of one alternative standard associated with landscaping. Silver on State Highway 121 business and Vista Ridge Mall Drive. Love it industrial. Item 15, resignation of Amy Ferrelli declaring a vacancy and appointment to the education position on the Arts Advisory Board. Think we have a recommendation from the ISD for Ian O'Brien. Any questions on that one? Could be Ian.
There's no residence required.
Just curious, why did we get that yesterday? Because I was kind of locked in on the real stuff and we just got the email yesterday.
I, go ahead.
So a question came up about, you know, information regarding the applicant's background. We actually, because this was a specialized specific position, didn't include the application because it was the only applicant for that position.
And it also went to the two council members who were over that board.
Who was over that board?
I forget the two, I'd put on that.
I believe it was Meredith and I.
I just got it yesterday.
Yeah, because, see, Patrick and I were together on the boards, but we didn't do the art.
I don't remember, you were out of town when we looked at this.
But it is a statutory requirement for the education.
Yeah.
It's a separate part than the other ones. I brought it off the question because we had nothing on it. It's like there's no application, there's no resume, there's no.
So typically what happens, what has been happening, as I understand it, is that the city secretary office, when there's a vacancy on a board, the city secretary's office looks at the two council members who have been assigned to vet that board. Then those two will take a look at it and then it will come to the whole council at a council meeting. If we want to change that process, we can, but.
Did you have this resume in everything? But I'm not voting on somebody, I don't know anything about them.
Sure.
Yeah, we did. That was like about three weeks ago, so yeah. Because I was out of town, I moved in and yeah, so I forgot.
So if we want to change that process, we can.
No, I just mean in mid-year and stuff like that. I understand when we're doing it at the beginning, but in mid-year, just because there's a vacancy and all of a sudden.
Yeah, so ideally.
Or presented with a vacancy and then we're presented with a name with no backup and you expect me to vote on it? No.
So it sounds like we may want to put that in backup, but I think again, we'll have those two council members on that committee.
We've had too many of best ofs in jail.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, sir, we'll change that process.
Not a problem. Thank you, appreciate it. Item 17, Louisville City Code Amendment, Chapter 15, Traffic and Vehicles, amended parking on specific streets. So this is for the parking outside of Glory Park, to move that to two hours maximum.
Was this just something that we initiated or was there a concern about this?
Item 18, ordinance amending the City Code, Chapter 15, Article 4, Section 15-126. This is parking in front of Louisville Elementary School. So parking on the street, waiting because it's school season. Questions on this one?
I have a story for you.
We do have a closed session tonight, council, just so you know. And with that, we will go ahead, if there are no further questions or comments on the agenda, we will go ahead and move to item B, Old Town Entry Feature Design Update. We have our Director of Parks Recreation, Stacey Anaya, and Ignacio Mejia, Project Design Manager, Kim Lee Horn, to present the PowerPoint.
All right, Mayor, City Council members and park fans, just want to talk to you a little bit about where we are with the concept design for our entry markers into Old Town. We'll kind of go through our project background, what we're looking at in terms of themes and inspiration, what some of the conceptual costs are for each of those themes, where we'll start our primary entry marker location and then what our next steps are. So if you remember back in March of 2023, staff kind of presented some entry feature options and locations throughout Louisville, Old Town Louisville, where we might want to look at some new entry features to kind of designate your coming into this neighborhood. At the time, we looked at the historic Corsa Cana to kind of be the preferred existing design for inspiration and kind of running through that look. And I've updated this since we sent out the agenda item. The action step was actually for 225,000, I fact-fingered the 275. And it was sort of based on the estimate of $64,000 at 2017 and we escalated that to about $75,000, $80,000 to get to where we were gonna be. As we got a little bit into the project, we learned that it'd probably be a little bit more costly for that. So as soon as we got the action step, we established a city team, just come together and start running with the project that consisted of the Parks and Recreation Department, the Community Relations and Tourism, Engineering, Planning, Public Services to kind of head it up. And we retained Kim Lee Horn and Ignacio to help us design these. And a couple of reasons why we went with Kim Lee Horn is, one, they've been really involved in the development of our plan for I-35, our UDC, and then they also helped us achieve Glory Park and Park de la Gloria's design and really being able to listen to what, you know, residents, what city council, what staff needed, how to integrate that and leave us some flexibility as we move through the project. So as we started, we really had some goals on here based on that meeting from 2023. We wanted to reflect the Louisville heritage, especially in Old Town. We wanted something that was iconic. Gina told me I had to stay within budget, which is very difficult for me, but we're trying, right? And how could we make it within what those funds were gonna be? We wanted to hit a centennial celebration ribbon cutting, something that we might not be able to get all three done, but if we could get one in that 2025 year. And then really looking at how we might be able to be efficient with maintenance and longevity of the entry feature, not only from the materials lasting long, but that it would kind of, you know, live through the times and not be dated. And that's where we kind of got to the point of what some of the projects might look a little bit outside the concept of an arch when we were looking at maintenance and longevity and looking at budget, where existing utilities are located within some of the locations. It's making it very, very difficult to get arches in without some extreme costs or some extra right-of-way acquisition. And so I'm gonna punt the ball over to Ignacio so he can talk a little bit about what are themes for inspiration, where, what our process was.
Thank you, Stacy. When you start to see a lot of these imagery, it's since from the Old Town, so we took inspiration on your heritage components. We looked at the building facades, we looked at some of those materials that were incorporated within downtown, some of the old historic signs that are still there and building on that, those materials, that's really where we came to inspire the three themes that we're gonna present. Now, one thing, as we present these three themes, keep in mind that not one theme is a, you could take components of one theme and incorporate them into the other. Right now, it's very conceptual, although they look very finished, but they are conceptual. All the detailing, we're still gonna be evolving and keep in mind that we can incorporate, you know, the feedback that we received today in a preferred theme. So the first one was the motor history theme and we took liberty from some of your historic photos on the motor history. As you can see, a lot of the design inspiration came from the old Huffines, gas stations. We would incorporate some neon lighting into this concept. So the materials in this, in this theme are the brick, the cast stone, the perforated metal, having the Old Town Louisville on the top and the established date. Now, there is an opportunity on the column to have a flexible banner where you can switch those out for your events, like your Chalk Blusa or any of those events that you want to highlight that are coming up. So that's the theme. And then the brand, the Old Town Louisville brand, that would be material brand that would be incorporated or pinned to the base of this column. And, and the flexibility about this one is that the circle with the Texas, that, that could be anything, it can be designed to, so that you can switch it if this was to be placed elsewhere within Old Town, then you could have the flexibility to put something there different. Again, this is a view as you're coming into Old Town, they, on Main Street. And again, between the median, this is a view as you would be, that you see leaving. We did keep the heights above your standard signal pole arms, so we, those are, that's why it's elevated over at least 19 feet for clearance. It would incorporate the neon lighting. The next one, the next theme we built out of inspiration was City Hall, taking the geometry of the arches, the top, the cove being the brick, and really using that as part of the archway. This is a scenario where we, we would be looking at a complete arch, having Louisville and Old Town vertically on the columns, again, using the material from the stars that we saw on some of the buildings, some of that corten. And again, these are elements that could be added or removed depending on what inspires, you know, the feedback today. But in this scenario, it would be pinned lettering and pinned brand on the columns as well. These are all the same views and in this scenario, we changed the naming so as you're coming into Old Town, you see the, the name, Old Town and the establishment, and as you're leaving, it's more branded for the city with, in the purple Martin as the logo. And the, the last theme is really based on the old historic pecan orchard and we took the liberty from the geometry of the pecan leaf and how that, that starts to, that could be turned into a metal, a corten metal that you start to really blend some of that historic material, but it also gives you the opportunity to add lighting to it. Again, in this scenario, it's, it's an arch, but it could also work alone as a standalone column. This is a view, the same view looking as you're approaching Old Town and this, this scenario or theme, you know, it lends for creating shadows on the ground as you're, as you're coming in, so you're gonna see the pattern as well and then during the night it would be turned, or not eternally, but it would be lit. As you're leaving on this view, we just left a name for a tack line that you could include on, on the, on the top as well on this one. And we talked about materials, pretty much the kit of parts and the materials. We are, Stacy mentioned the longevity of the materials need to be timeless and long-lasting, so some of these materials are metal, they're powder coated. The corten, as it ages, it looks great, so that's itself, it's gonna create a timeless look and then incorporating the, the brick and the cast stone as well and the lettering, it would be, on the Corsa Cana example, there was a, they were cut out letters, so from the back, you really, you really read something different. We're proposing that the lettering be just legible from one side and backlit and then have the opportunity in all of them to have lettering on the other side on the east and west views again. And, and again, incorporating lighting in all of the, the themes. We talked about the maintenance and that would be an element that, you know, that would require maintenance, but they would all be illuminated at night.
Right, so this is kind of what we're looking at in terms of our considerations with the single column markers or the archway markers, the different, different styles. We're looking at the single column running between about 180 to 225 for each one of those. When you're looking at the, the markers, one of the things that we've done, and we've just done a survey of all the utilities and stuff out there, so about this point right here. Ignacio, there is a sewer line, I believe, that we'll have to deal with for an arch on the Mill Street side of things. It doesn't mean we can't do it, it just makes it a little bit more costly to deal with over time. All of them have about the same maintenance and ease of replication, with this one probably being a little bit more that if someone hit it, there'd be a little bit more damage to the entire structure versus one of the others.
They're ballers.
Put on my list for gardeners, I'll be back to you. So talking about that type of thing, so like Ignacio said, one of our, our opportunities here is like for some interchangeability and taking some feedback. When we look at what is most replicable at all three sites, whether that be on Main Street, down on Mill Street, by Mill Street Elementary, or down closer to the railroad station, to the Old Town station, is this one gives us more flexibility of where we can, we can put it. And we can change up the theme slightly as we get closer to those points. So maybe on Mill Street, that's where we pay heritage to the pecan tree grows. Down near the Old Town Rail Station, we could go more of a train, you know, opportunity. And if we needed to incorporate some other parts of Louisville heritage, we've got some opportunities there. Like for instance, one of the comments that we've got back and have debated with the team is whether the Old Town brand should be there or if we should use that area for some of the icons of our heritage. That kind of gives it, or, and we've designed it in such a way that should that go, if we decide to roll that way and should that change, that's easily taken out and replaced without really compromising what the integrity of the structure is.
How many are we talking here and exactly where did we say we were putting them?
So, let's roll back.
Or maybe forward.
So we talked about three spots, there's one on Main Street, one down at the other end of Main Street near the railroad station and then over here off of high school near Mill Street Elementary.
I would just like to, just because I'm a Louisville traditionalist, I guess you want to call that, motor was never our heritage. Yeah, we had Speedway, but that was after Louisville became Lewisville. It was the Griss Mill, that's why we call it Mill Street. It was the Cotton Gin, the first one in Denton County, matter of fact, Wise, Wise County, Collin County, all of them had to come here. So I'm looking for something with cotton, pecans for the pecan orchard and something railroad. I care less about motors. I mean, the Huffines are a great name, but they didn't come until after all of this was built.
Right, so let me ask you a question. If we went with the single column and were able to integrate maybe the idea of the silos or the Griss Mill into either the construction of the column or integrate that into those areas, would that suit what you're looking for from us? And maybe that's like my fault, maybe we shouldn't have said motor, maybe we should have said mobility or something, because we are kind of like the crossroads for people, right? So that was a shortcoming on my, on my part. But I'm sure that, I understand what you're saying and I think, you know.
It was built on the Cotton Gin and the Griss Mill.
Right.
And then the railroad came in and boom.
Right.
I can, I can see where you could keep that, but instead of just the Texas map.
It could be changed out.
Yeah.
You could change it all the way out to that established circle as well.
Like two different, I mean, three different graphics.
I get that, it's like a tire. But if you just got the hub, took the hub out of it and just used it for all displays.
All right.
Yeah, I think this gave my, I remember I got an architecture grant.
Right, right.
You kind of had me at number one, but then you shouldn't have shown me number three.
Number three, something.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, I'm kind of with Councilman Kate about the motor thing, but I think you could take parts of the pecan, because I really like that corten steel thing incorporated and make that work. But I do think you're a little, you got too much going on with number one.
You're making junk.
You got, well, no, it's too much.
Junk.
Stuff there. I mean, you could make it a lot simpler and to me, the third one makes it look more modern, but a hint of the past.
Right.
But one thing that we thought as we kind of got into what, you know, replicability and where this might go is that this, this actually would be a great entry point on a trail. It's a lot easier to do, you can get closer to it and see the intricacy of the thing, so.
It's Texas.
So, all right, so what we're hearing is, we'll get there.
So I'm gonna throw a monkey wrench in that. I like, the archway to the City Hall theme, I like the columns better. Like even if you were to put a single column and if you're gonna put a stamp in there where the star is, you could actually stamp, put a concrete, cotton gin in each one, do something different with each one and figure out a way to maybe backlight that piece. I like that, the, the look of that better than anything else that I've seen.
So you mean just like?
If you just did a single, yeah, if you just did a single one.
Touchy.
I'm not following, so.
So the City Hall thing, but you don't even, I like the archway, but I like, but because of the cost, because of the cost, you don't have to do that, but I like, if you just take the first one, the, the motor history thing, like that column looks human. So if you replace that, like, I don't even think you need to overhead, but like you take that one individual column and you can, you can stamp it different ways with different things on it.
Yeah, I think that works better with the pecan stuff too. Yeah, I think if you.
That's my design thing for 10 years.
Bam.
Yeah, I like those columns in the, in the second one better myself. But I do like the single column because to me, it's more functional, it's, it's cheaper, it's easier to maintain. But take that column and replace that column.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so you're saying go on the left one, but just have the column for the second one.
Yeah, you don't even need the top, I mean, you can top it with whatever you want, just take this, I'm not talking about the archway, just take one single column, that looks more filled out and.
And then where, see where the star is? You could put your like cotton thing or your cotton thing or.
Or a different thing.
Train thing.
So I have a comment about the location, because I'm looking at this location map and at all three of these locations, I think maybe there's still some sort of debate or discussion about possible, certainly at Mill, changing that up. But I think recently we've been talking about what could we do at, at Main and Railroad. But I think recently, we've been talking about what could we do at, at Main and Railroad. Um, and the same would, right at the couplet, at the couplet ends. If we're gonna do something different there, I don't want to lock in to something that's gonna prevent us from doing what we want to do there.
On the second one, could we not do that on Main and, um, on the west entrance? Let me ask a clarification on what you're, what you're saying. Are you talking about with the DCTA, all the changes that are going over there?
I've seen a rendering that shows a potential roundabout there.
Yeah, so to me, I think we could do on a, I mean, we, all of these, we would be doing on a phased approach. So, I mean, the first one would be the one in front of the visitors' information center is kind of where we're anticipating, and so we're, this wouldn't be, we really would get it year by year on what we were ready to do, and I certainly don't want to put a giant gateway sign that's then gonna be torn down, so.
That's my point.
We would be strategic about that, for sure.
Uh, and our, our goal would be to get, because this is pretty much gonna remain the same, this entryway, what our property is, our goal would be to move to get this one done first, and to have it so that we can ribbon cut it either at Western Days or Holiday Stroll.
So, are you saying the, the arch would not work there because of all the right-of-way stuff?
It's gonna be difficult.
Okay.
There's gonna be, we're gonna have to have some discussions about where it's gonna go. Do you want to?
It wouldn't be able to go all the way across either.
Right, it's only gonna be on one side.
Right.
So, and I, and just for the record, if we're gonna do an archway, I personally believe it needs to be over the whole street. I don't like the look of it being on one side of the street and the other side. I don't like that at all.
I don't think anybody would want it double.
I prefer the single column, so.
I think the single column resolves that issue.
Right.
Okay.
Because it still gives you east and west bound on both the travel lanes and the key.
It's a bit different than everybody else's.
It is, and that's one of the things that we like, is we wanted kind of like, you know, um, our monikers with the deep roots, broad wings. We wanted to like talk about it, paying, paying tribute to our heritage, but not limiting us to where we're going. And I think that's one of the things, like, there's so much going on. Um, so I think we, we're, when we're looking at just what the challenges this presents, and then if y'all wanted to arch it over both, it's, you're doubling that, so you're looking at upwards of $750,000 for this.
That may not, uh, that may not be a decision I broke. I like the single one, with the other.
Just recall number one. Just recall number one.
Yeah, and, and this one also would be able to be scaled down, so if you have other , uh, wayfinding opportunities just closer, you know, to the, in the core, you could use that same family and just scale it to a more of a pedestrian scale as well.
No, I think, I think the bicycle pump slash corkscrew look is.
Way to go.
Right. That's my favorite. I like the, the multi-tone, I like the multi-tone column, um, put on there, I'm very good with that. I think the banners are probably pushing it. I don't, especially here in Old Town, we're gonna have banners for the events. I mean, unless there's an intent to remove the cross-street banners that we already put in for events, I think that's duplication of effort, and we could use that for symbology or, you know, put that, that two-tone color in there. I like that it mirrors City Hall, it also mirrors the counter, County Building, which was designed to kind of mirror City Hall, so we've got kind of that, that same messaging going on. And then, yeah, use that center circle to be a different icon.
Okay, all right. Um, so now that we've kind of gotten some direction and had your preferred themes, we'll incorporate those into the design, we'll, um, create a final design, we'll probably, we have to go to the Old, uh, Old Town DRC to talk about this and how we're gonna get it done. We'll aim to have it done and award a project in spring, do construction during the summer, and then fall winter ribbon cutting. Does that sound reasonable?
I think we got a consensus.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Appreciate the input. All right, anything else for workshop?
Yes, sir.
If there is none, we will break until 7:00 PM, and then we will be getting our council meeting. Thank you. It is 7:00 PM, welcome to this regular session of the Lewisville City Council. We do have a quorum. Uh, first up on tonight's agenda, we have the invocation by myself, so if you would please join me in a few moments of reflection and prayer. Councilmember Green?
Please join me for the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. I could have Melinda Goller and Gary Henderson up here with me, please, because I get a little stage fright every once in a while, I need to make sure I got, I got good friends backing me up. Right? So, for those of you who don't know, um, Melinda is one of our representatives on the Board of Directors for the United Way of Denton County, and of course, Gary Henderson is the chief executive, which means he has an amazing team around him. They, they do a great work, and we've got Live United Month coming, so, um, wanted to do a brief presentation, and you all, we can do the call and response thing, whereas when I say whereas, you can say it too. So if you're interested to make this a little more fun, we can go that way. So, whereas, United Way of Denton County mobilizes communities like Lewisville to action so all can thrive, and, by working together with donors, supporters, and collaborators across Denton County, United Way of Denton County creates opportunities to expand education, promote economic mobility, improve health and mental health, and provide basic needs for over 53,000 Denton County residents annually, and?
Yeah.
Y'all got this. United Way of Denton County leads the effort with a network of nonprofits, governments, businesses, and donors to respond to our neighbors' immediate needs and seek out better solutions for larger community-wide issues. There is a public purpose for providing financial and volunteer support to United Way, because their work directly and indirectly improves the lives of Lewisville residents by building capacity, administering disaster recovery, and providing resources to our community nonprofits. Now, therefore, I, TJ Gilmore, Mayor of the City of Lewisville, and on behalf of the Lewisville City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2024 as Live United Month in Lewisville, Texas, and urge all residents to observe the occasion with appropriate ceremonies and activities. The one activity you can do is go check out the United Way website and figure out where you can make a difference, because they're always looking for help, and whether that's your, your, your blood, your sweat, your tears, your treasure, whatever that is, they've got a place for you at the United Way. So thank you guys so much for all that you do. You want to say a few words?
First of all, I would like to thank the council and you, Mayor, for recognizing Live United Month. And I also want to do a shout out to the employees of the City of Lewisville. They have been longtime supporters of United Way. They give very generously every month, and because of what they do and what other people give, United Way is able to fund 18 nonprofit agencies in Denton County that, together with United Way, have served over 53,000 of our friends and family that live in Denton County in 2023. And we really appreciate your support and your, your employee support.
I, I think what is so awesome is that we help keep a floor under, under folks.
Absolutely.
We really do. Gary?
You just watched us, I mean, we've seen Angela Claire Powell also being on the United Way.
She is, she is, she's doing great. All right, thank you guys so much, appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
All right, uh-oh, we, here we go. Teddy, Teddy's got to prove we were here. Thank you, thank you, appreciate you. Uh, let's see, do we know how to spin this? There's a new trick now. Oh, there we go, okay. All right, item D1, Public Hearing, Consideration and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas authorizing the City of Lewisville to participate in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter 2303, Texas Government Code, Act identifying available tax incentives, designating a liaison for communication with interested parties, nominating Caliber Body Works of Texas LLC to the Office of the Governor, Economic Development, and Tourism through the Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project, providing an effective date and declaring an emergency. Caliber Body Works of Texas has submitted a request to staff asking that the City Council consider an ordinance that authorizes the city to participate in a Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter 2303, Texas Government Code, and nominates Caliber for designation by the Governor's Office of Economic Development and Tourism as a Texas enterprise project. Caliber's headquarters and corporate call center are located at 2941 Lake Vista Drive. Caliber plans to make a capital investment of $5 million, retain 452 jobs, and create 10 new jobs, making them a competitive candidate for the Texas Enterprise Zone Program. The Act requires that a public hearing be held before adopting an ordinance or order for identification of local incentives. For this state program, there is no fiscal impact to the City of Lewisville if Caliber is awarded the designation. It is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have a public hearing on this, and it is now open. There is no comment or questions about this. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Moved, close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Five, five to nothing is the vote, the public hearing is now closed. Council, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
Move to approve the ordinance per the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas authorizing the City of Lewisville to participate in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter 2303, Texas Government Code, identifying available tax incentives, designating a liaison for communication with interested parties, nominating Caliber Body Works of Texas LLC to the Office of the Governor, Economic Development, and Tourism through the Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project, providing an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you please vote. Item passes five to nothing. Item two, Public Hearing, Consideration and Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas authorizing the City of Lewisville to participate in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter 2303, Texas Government Code, identifying available taxes, incentives, designating a liaison for communication with interested party, nominating Columbia Medical Center of Lewisville subsidiary LP to the Office of the Governor, Economic Development, and Tourism through the Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project, providing an effective date and declaring an emergency. Columbia Medical Center of Lewisville subsidiary LP, MCL, has submitted a request to staff asking that the City Council consider an ordinance that authorizes the city to participate in a Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter 2303, Texas Government Code, and nominates MCL for designation by the Governor's Office of Economic Development and Tourism as a Texas enterprise project. MCL is located at 500 West Main Street and plans to renovate and expand its women's services and neonatal intensive care unit due to robust growth and increasing in average occupancy. MCL plans to make a capital investment of $15,977,000, maintain 865 jobs, including 329 that meet the retained job requirement under the Act, and create 10 new jobs, making them a competitive candidate for the Texas Enterprise Zone Program. The Act requires that a public hearing be held before the adoption of an ordinance in order for identification of local incentives. For this state program, there is no fiscal impact to the City of Lewisville if MCL is awarded the designation. It is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Marichal Samples, our Director of Economic Available, Development, available for questions, and we do now have an open public hearing. There are no comments or questions on this request.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Motion passes five to nothing. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance.
I move to, um, to approve this ordinance set forth in the caption above.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas authorizing the City of Lewisville to participate in the Texas Enterprise Zone Program pursuant to the Texas Enterprise Zone Act, Chapter 2303, Texas Government Code, identifying available tax incentives, designating a liaison for communication with interested parties, nominating Columbia Medical Center of Lewisville subsidiary LP to the Office of the Governor, Economic Development, and Tourism through the Economic Development Bank as an enterprise project, providing an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you please vote. Item passes five to nothing. Item three, Public Hearing, Consideration and Ordinance granting a special use permit for manufacturing medium intensity on a portion of 1.426 acres, legally described as Lot 5, Block A, Pinell subdivision Phase 2, located at 1495 North Keely Avenue, Zoned Light Industrial District as requested by David Velazquez on behalf of WH Real Estate Group LLC, the property owner, case number 24-07-12-SUP. The Woodhills by David is a direct-to-consumer furniture manufacturer looking to relay, relocate their operations from Denton and expand operations into a 7,300 square foot leased space in an existing industrial development. Furniture production is considered a medium-intensity manufacturing use and requires approval of a special use permit per the Unified Development Code. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, five to nothing, on August 6, 2024. It is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our Planning Director, available for questions, and we are now with an open forum.
Uh, Mayor, I have a question for Richard, or clarification, really, um, just to clarify that this is an existing light industrial building, correct? That this is a finish-out with a, an existing business is moving from Denton to Lewisville to occupy an existing light industrial space, not a new industrial space?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Council, I will now entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by granting a special use permit for manufacturing medium intensity on a portion of a 1.426-acre tract legally described as Lot 5, Block A, Pinell Division, Phase 2, located at 1495 North Keely Avenue and Zoned Light Industrial District, providing for repealer severability penalty and an effective date and declaring an emergency.
Council, if you please vote. Item passes five to nothing. Item four, Public Hearing, Consideration and Ordinance amending the zoning ordinance by amending ordinance number 0428-22-ZON to rezone approximately 10.207 acres located on the northeast corner of Lady Tesla Avenue and Essex Boulevard, legally described as 10.207 acres out of the Amos Singleton survey abstract 1138 from Plan Development Multi-Family III district to Plan Development Townhouse II district to amend the Plan Development concept plan set forth in exempt 5B, the Realm Subdistrict Concept Plan thereto by amending the concept plan for 50.562 acres located north of Lady Tesla Avenue, legally described as 50.562 acres out of the Amos Singleton survey abstract 1138 and the Benjamin Shunover survey abstract 1209, case number 24-04-2-PZ. On January 3, 2022, the City Council adopted the Castle Hills Plan Development District ordinance number 0428-22-ZON that incorporated all provisions of the Castle Hills Development Agreement along with the variances to the agreement approved since 1996. The PD allows changes to base zoning districts and the sub, sub-district concept plans following the zoning processes in the Unified Development Code. The applicant is requesting to change the base zoning district on 10.207 acres from Plan Development Multi-Family III district to Plan Development Townhouse II district to allow for a front-entry townhome community where multifamily development had originally been planned. The proposed changes also necessitate an amendment to the approved concept plan. The concept plan for the Realm South Subdistrict is being amended in its entirety, however, the changes only impact 50.562 acres, which includes the 10.207 acres proposed for rezoning. The proposed concept plan amendment consists of the addition of the proposed townhomes along with a reconfiguration of the remaining multifamily units. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously, five to nothing, on August 6, 2024, and is recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. We do have Mr. Richard Lutke, our Planning Director, available for questions, um, and he does have a presentation. There you go, Richard?
Good evening, Mayor Gilmore, and members of the council. Uh, this presentation will give you a, a brief overview of the proposed amendments, but at first, uh, first I would like to go ahead and cover a little bit of background for you and for the audience regarding Castle Hills. regarding Castle Hills. Castle Hills came into being back in 1996 with an agreement between the city and Bright Development, and in that agreement had parameters for annexation at a future date. During that time before annexation, plats would, as land was platted in Castle Hills, a zoning designation would be added to that plat, and so that kind of dictated the land uses in the various portions of Castle Hills. After annexation, a plan development was created for the entire Castle Hills area to ensure that the regulation was consistent with the 1996 agreement and consistent with the development that had already occurred on the ground. The plan development created three sub-districts. The Realm sub-district is one of those, and that is the subject of the amendments tonight. Sub-districts can be amended independently of each other, and base zoning districts can be changed through our regular zoning process. The Realm is further divided into two sub-areas, to the north and the south, and that's divided by Windhaven Parkway. So those two sub-areas can be amended independently through our regular zoning process where notices are sent to properties within 200 feet, including a notice in the paper and then the two public hearings, one before P and Z and one before the City Council. So like in all plan developments, the concept plan controls the development, but it can always be amended, and often conditions change that warrant those amendments. Flexibility was built into the Realm, the concept for the Realm, since that sub-district still had quite a few undeveloped parcels without final plans and with the fact that there was a lot of likelihood that some shifting of the various components may need to be done in the future. Additional flexibility included that minor concept plan amendments could be approved by staff, but major modification to the concept plan requires a zoning amendment plus the public hearing zoning process that I mentioned earlier. Major modification includes the addition or removal of buildings and changes to site circulation patterns that impact connectivity within the site and to the surrounding development. And it is my job as a plan director to determine if a proposed modification is a major or a minor modification. As far as the multifamily use that's allowed in Castle Hills, since 1996, there was an initial 5,000 multifamily unit cap for the entirety of the Castle Hills PD. As of today, we have 2,368 units on the ground, so that leaves an additional 2,632 multifamily units that are yet to be built in Castle Hills. Now, there are a couple of exceptions to note, though. In the Crown Center sub-district, which is located on the west side of the Sam Rayburn Tollway, it has its own cap of an additional 2,000 units. Also, in the Realm sub-district, that sub-district is allowed unlimited multifamily as long as it is part of an overall mixed-use component with commercial on the ground floor. So many of the developments that you see along the Sam Rayburn Tollway do not count towards the original cap because they are part of a mixed-use projects and have that ground floor commercial. As far as open space and parks, one exhibit, one component of the PD is an open space plan. And also written into the text, all future park fees were waived by the original development agreement, which prevents the city from requiring any future parks. And that plan does show areas that are designated as public parks maintained by the City of Lewisville. There's other areas that are private open space that's maintained by the Castle Hills HOA. So both of those are shown on there. There are some open spaces that have public access easements, so they do count towards the city's 10-minute walk-to-a-park initiative. The Crown Center sub-district that I mentioned earlier does have green space and public access easement dedication requirements, and again, that'll assist with our 10-minute walk-to-a-park initiative. But elsewhere in Castle Hills, future planned open space is not really protected by, is only protected by the concept plan, which can be amended by the processes set forth in the PD. There is no obligation for the developer to allow public access to any future open space, and again, those areas would not assist with our 10-minute walk-to-a-park initiative unless there's a separate agreement with a developer to make those areas publicly accessible. So in reality, there's multiple types of open space in Castle Hills. You do have your city-owned parkland. You also have your HOA-maintained parkland. You have your privately owned but publicly accessible parkland, but there are also a lot of other open areas that are not really programmed. They can serve as drainage, they can serve as a utility easement. Some just remain natural, some serve as buffers in between the various land uses, like single-family and multifamily. So the concept plan aids in kind of identifying areas where there's not proposed buildings, and that's where you get those open areas that do serve as buffers between various land uses. The image before you is the current concept plan for the Realm that was adopted with the original PD shortly after annexation. So as you can see, this is kind of the central, north-central portion of the Castle Hills plan development area, and the vast majority of it contains multifamily uses and some other mixtures of uses, particularly along on the northern side, north of Windhaven Parkway. That area does contain a lot of commercial with multifamily uses kind of intermingled or placed on top of in various situations. Now, your multifamily that is not on top of commercial, that's not part of an overall mixed-use development, that is mostly concentrated currently right along the south side of Windhaven Parkway. And that has, this central area of Castle Hills has always been the area intended for all of the entitled multifamily, the multifamily that does count against that 5,000 cap. You can see, though, that the southern portion does have some single-family along Essex Drive and just north of Parker Road, FM 544. Then kind of northeast of that, you do have an area with some townhomes. So the request before you tonight originally went to P and Z with kind of three components, the base zoning district for the townhomes, and then the two different concept plan amendments, which totaled 54 acres. But tonight, we've split that one item into two. So as you can see on the upper right-hand, item number D4 contains the 10-acre base zoning district zone change from MF3, multifamily 3, to Townhouse 2, and it also includes the concept plan for that 50 areas that also includes that 10 acres. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval five to zero of that request. The item on the bottom right, item D5, which we will cover a little bit later, amends the concept plan for the 3.4-acre site that is just to the south of Parker Road, FM 544. The P and Z recommended denial of that component five to zero. Do want to make a note that a third item, to complicate things, item D6 contains text amendments to the overall PD that'll facilitate the townhomes proposed in D4, the current item that we're on. This image does show on the left-hand side the concept plan for the southern portion of the Realm, and you can see outlined in blue, the upper portion is item D4, the 50-acre site that's subject to the concept plan and the base zone change, and then you have the smaller site that's labeled item D5 down at the bottom of that area, the 3.4 acres. Then the image on the right-hand side is the proposed concept plan amendment, and as you can see, it incorporates, or at least the item that's labeled as D4, does show the townhomes that are being proposed on the western side of this 50-acre site, and then item D5 again is just, is shown at the very bottom, that 3.4 acres. Now, this is more of a close-up of the zone change area, so you can see on the concept plan, in the image on the right outlined in yellow, is the area proposed for the base district zone change, currently zoned multifamily 3. So that is what the developer can build today. That's what was approved with the original PD in January of '22. This concept plan, or at least for this 10-acre site, showed a multifamily building with kind of wrapped around a parking garage with a fairly significant amount of open space, space where there's no buildings in between the two multifamily developments, then a fairly large one just kind of running along the north side of Lady Tesla Avenue. And that buffer is approximately about 200 feet from Lady Tesla Avenue. So in contrast, on the right-hand side is the proposed base zoning district, so it does show where the townhomes, 87 townhome units are being kind of dropped in that area outlined in yellow. Now, this slide shows the before and after side by side, so the current concept plan is on the left-hand side. So the right-hand side, again, shows the townhomes being dropped in, and then you have a reconfiguration of the remaining multifamily on the right-hand side. So you do, one of the advantages here is that you do get a significant reduction in density with those townhomes, so it does spread out the units quite a bit. They're lower in height, much lower density, but then that concentrated some of the multifamily on the right-hand side or the eastern side, and it brought some of those buildings a little bit closer to Lady Tesla Avenue. I believe it's about 40 feet is what the buffer is along Lady Tesla Avenue between the multifamily buildings and the street itself. As far as changes to the open space, north of Lady Tesla Avenue, the proposed plan has a dedication of about approximately half-acre public park right there at the northeast corner of Lady Tesla Avenue and Essex Boulevard. But as far as the reduction of the non-regulated open space or buffer area, so to speak, it really, we estimate a reduction of about 7.3 acres. And again, as far as the change in residential uses, north of Lady Tesla Avenue have the addition of about 87 townhomes. Now, there is a reduction in the number of multifamily units in that immediate block just north of Lady Tesla, but not in the overall realm because that multifamily cap is unchanged, and that number of units is entitled in that overall Realm sub-district. Staff has heard, has received quite a bit of feedback from neighbors in the area, and some of the common concerns include loss of the open space, loss of, potential loss of property value. Many of the residents talked about how when they were looking at purchasing their homes, their realtor or builder explained to them that the property to the north of Lady Tesla was going to be a park with trails. So a lot of those residents felt that that was not accurate. Also, there's a concern of increased traffic along Lady Tesla Avenue and Essex. So as far as staff's response to the loss of open space, and again, that is solely due to more of a spreading out of the density with the townhomes, so that is why some of that open space went away. As far as property value, that's not really something that we can comment on. It is very, very complicated, and it's difficult to determine the exact impact on property value. As far as the images that were shown to the buyers in that area, the initial concept plan did show that 200 feet of open area, and it did have some trails shown on it. And again, the concept plans in the Realm are not super detailed. This was kind of more of a hybrid concept plan. They basically focused on the basics, building locations, and then circulation in form of streets and other accessways. And as far as traffic, traffic, additional traffic, any additional traffic in that area will be from the 87 townhome units, but it's really probably seen as more of a trade-off. The reduction in the multifamily is just going to get placed further north, closer to Windhaven Parkway, and you still would have the other 87, or the traffic generated by the 87 townhome units then would be using the street network in that area. As far as the action summary, staff does recommend approval. The P and Z recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and for, in order for council to approve a vote, it would require a simple majority. And with that, be glad to answer any questions, and if there are no questions, the applicant has a short presentation.
Counsel, any questions?
That's a lot of information to throw at you at one time.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you for that. There are no questions from council. I'd like to invite Mr. Eric Stanley from Bright Realty to come up. He has a presentation. Thank you, Richard.
Okay, just use the arrow key.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Richard, staff. My name's Eric Stanley. I have been coming to this great hall since 2004, and usually I just like to sit back there and say I'm here if you have questions. I'm not really keen on getting up and talking, but in this case, I am. Little bit of history, development began in 1996, as Richard very eloquently pointed out, and for 20-plus years, that was the size of the workbook that we lived by, and it worked very well. In fact, Claire and I were having lunch today, and we both agree that no single developer has created more value for the City of Lewisville than Bright Realty since its inception in '96 to where we are currently. This agreement in 1996 got amended three times prior to annexation. Once in 2008 to add a small parcel that was part of the Lord property to our east there along Josie to get us all the way down to the power line. A second time in May of 2014 to give the entitlements to what is now part of the Realm sub-district, the unlimited multifamily above a commercial use. And then finally, in February of '20, I believe, Claire, isn't that right, when we did Crown Center? And that was the Crown Center entitlements. The reason it got amended in 2014 and 2020 is none of us thought about, back when Mr. Owens was here and Chris Bright, what the world was going to want in terms of mixed-use projects and development projects in 1996 to 2024 is a long time. So flexibility was always important. After the 2020 amendment to Crown Center, wasn't long before Lewis, and within this agreement, there is a vehicle, the original agreement for annexation, called for a number of things to occur, but the city approached us in 2020 about annexation. And we said, well, the districts are in place, we certainly want to keep our entitlements. Many of us worked very hard, obviously started with this, amended a couple of times. We want to preserve those rights, and we have public-private partnership, which has served us both very well over time. We want to protect that, but we're open to it if the neighborhood's open to it. The neighborhood chose to do it, and annexation occurred November 15, '21, if memory serves. I'm getting old, so my dates might be a little off. And when that occurred, something I know I didn't know, I think I know Liz knew, but I'm not sure the rest of the staff was fully aware of it, that was in 60 days after that annexation date, everything in Castle Hills needed to be zoned as a result of state law. Wow. I'm glad, as Richard pointed out, for everything that we developed, we put a zoning classification on, so that was very easy to get that part zoned. The undeveloped areas, we had Crown Center put together, we had kind of the north side of the Realm area put together for the most part to create a PD, but the south side here where we're talking about these projects right now, truly, we had an idea, but it was a concept, and Richard, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but Richard and I worked very diligently, but we knew this was some preliminary plans. They certainly weren't anything more than that to get some kind of paper in place that says, yes, I can fit the 2,900 units. that says, yes, I can fit the 2,900 units, which is now down to 2,600 units in this area. How might that work? Through my own mistake, mine, there is a section up north of the power line but south of Windhaven, immediately west of Tesala. If I had a pointer, I could figure it out. I can't point on this. But there's a section of roughly nine acres up there that I thought was brought in under base zoning of GB2. It's not GB2, it's MF3. I thought I had to fit all the apartments south of the power line. I can fit 300 to 325 of the units north of the power line, which we're currently in design on, west of Tesala, above the power line. Well, that opened up some opportunity for the area south of the power line. As a result, we kind of went after this townhouse zoning. I had some available land, et cetera. Did I just hit enter, Richard, to move to the next one?
The arrow key.
Okay? And at annexation, there was zero open space in this area north of 544. At PD, there got to be eight acres of open space dedicated. And 70?
31.
31 originally. 31 acres, there was roughly seven acres of park area that park, per the park annexation agreement. And then 31 acres of other open space. Post the PD, which I would be remiss if I did not identify and recognize not only Claire, but her predecessors, Donna Baron, Claude King, and Chuck Owen, who initiated this, and the Lewisville staff. Because while this is what we used to operate by, this is what we now operate by. And that is a whole lot of work by this staff and they should be commended. This is it now. This was a lot easier. But now as a result of the PD, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's a little over eight, eight acres of park dedication in this area. And I think it's 71 total acres of open space. Yay. And there's about a mile-long hiking bike trail paid for by the developer. So, and, and as part of this book of annexation, it not only includes the PD, it includes an economic development agreement that we've availed ourselves of and have attracted some major tenants to remain here or move here into Lewisville as a result. And it has the TERs, which protected our bonded indebtedness. Let me talk about process for just a minute. In order to get to the city of Lewisville, P and Z, and/or council, with a staff recommendation for approval is not like falling off a log. It is not undoable, but it is enormous amount of work. It is, takes compromise. It takes vision. It takes sometimes educating me as a developer. It's taken me as a developer sometime to educate staff, just because of my history relative to some of the staff history, that this is what happened. Do you agree with that, Richard? But there is a collaboration of effort that goes into these. In these two cases, I'm down zoning multifamily to townhouse. If that were anywhere else in the city of Lewisville, I'd be applauded, but I'm not being in this case for whatever combination of reasons. The other, the south of 544, asking for that project, it is zoned for that. The zoning allows for that. This allows for that. But it's not like it's going to be easy to get done. One of the issues that my neighbors and understand, my house is on that map. I got the notices of this happening. I, me and Mrs. Stanley live there by ourselves, thank God. Well, a dog and a cat. But I live in this neighborhood and I, like everyone else, is worried about the value of my home. And I'm not, this causes me no concern. We have a very, how should I put this? A very robust neighborhood and they like to party, clearly, which is perfectly fine. One of the issues is parking on the street. There were eight or 10 cars on Tesala this evening at 4:30 when I drove home to feed my dog before I came up here. That's standard operating procedure. Those future apartments, there will be a gate, fence, wall, some barrier where those apartment people will have no reason to park on Tesala. They'll have to go around the big honking fence to get back to their apartment. That open space concept, whatever, was never going to be open space for the residents of Phase 10. It was going to be behind the fence and it would be amenities for the apartments. Dog parks, ball fields, pickleball, who knows? Additionally, it is going to be likely 10 years before I get down there to get to that apartment development. It just takes too long. I got five others to do before I get to those two. Additionally, there is a concern about crime. We have always had a concern about crime. This council has heard from Castle Hills residents about the FLIR cameras or Flic cameras or whatever they are.
Flock.
Flock, whatever. And the former police chief, I haven't had a chance to get to know the current police chief, but the former police chief and I had a number of conversations. He said, Eric, you don't, you don't have a crime problem in Castle Hills. While perception may be that you do, you don't. However, with the more apartments that you have, you run a risk to that. So we took action with our commercial association. For those of you who've been around a while, the Castle Hills associations are more powerful than city ordinances. And as such, in the commercial association that every apartment in Castle Hills is a part of, and every new apartment that goes into Castle Hills will be a part of, if an apartment complex causes a nuisance and it gets to be an issue, the commercial association has the right and the ability to find the estate owner. We hit them in the pocketbook and we've done it. And we've gotten actions changed. The original two complexes on the east side of Josie, south side of Windhaven, there was a, there was a time there was a little bit of a problem over there. We find them, they put a guard in place, they got rid of it. I don't want those issues. I got more apartments to build, more apartments to rent. And so we took that decisive action to try to take care of that issue. The, should I go to the next one, Richard, or stay right here? Hang on, I may have one more slide. Yes. Okay. The current zoning in the PD allows the multifamily to be five feet behind the right-of-way. That is the heavy green dash line that you see there. That's what the current zoning regulation, what this says can be done. I didn't have anything drawn up next to that, but when I brought this townhouse deal in with the revised concept plan, Richard said, hey, those houses are right across the street there. I can't make you, but would you consider pushing back your setback some? So I pushed the setback back 40 feet. That's not inexpensive land. It creates a buffer and we just agreed to it. I'm not, and we have never been, about trying to jam something down anybody's throat. No, no question about it. This is entitled. There's no reason that it can, in my opinion, not go to five feet from Tesala. It can, but we're in agreement if this gets approved and done, we'll do that additional buffer to take it 42 and a half feet or 43 feet or something from the street, which is in addition to the current buffering requirements. Just so I don't have to get up here and talk again, can I do the next one?
Actually, I think just to keep things clear in everybody's head, we just need to stay item by item.
I think that concludes this. I forgot something. Okay, good. Any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. I had a pack of business cards at the last P and Z meeting. I got a pack of business cards again. If any of my neighbors want my card and want to call me and talk to me about what's going on or have a question, I will absolutely take your call. I promise.
Mr. Stanley, I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that the heavy green line is five feet behind the right-of-way, but it's labeled as 10 here.
Well, that's because there's five feet right-of-way. It's 10 feet off the street.
It's 10 feet off the street. Okay. Thank you.
Whatever. I'm wrong. It's 10 because it's 10 feet off the street. And, but it's, yes, it is 10. Sorry, I said five.
Okay.
Have you had any meetings with the, with the neighborhood?
Well, I went to the P and Z and I offered up my business cards. I passed out, I think, seven or eight of them. I got one call from a resident, Mr. Ralph. He was, he lives in my neighborhood. He's my neighbor. And his concern was I didn't have enough trees in the park where the little Mel Center is in the middle of Phase 10. I could pull up a prior picture and show you in there somewhere. And I've not heard from any of the other neighbors who had concerns either on the next one we're talking about or this one. No one's reached out.
So have you reached out to them to set up a meeting with the neighbors?
No, ma'am.
Not them reaching out to you. So you haven't made?
I haven't.
Any attempt to meet with the neighborhood?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I have a question on your setback. You said that the setback was 40 now?
Yes.
What was it before on the?
10? Am I right saying?
On your whole concept, I was just asking about. It was 200, it was pretty close. The distance between the two.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
What'd you say? I had three people talking.
Approximately 200 feet.
200 feet.
Between the street and the closest.
So now it's 40.
Yes.
I've got no other questions for Mr. Stanley at this moment. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. I'm going to open this for additional public comment. I have, I have a few to get through here tonight. So thank you all for your patience and, and being here. I, I would ask that in the interest of time, of course, you are more than welcome to take your fully allotted time. I would also recommend that brevity is the soul of wit and we would appreciate that as well. So I will go through these cards as quickly as I can and please forgive me if I butcher a name and educate me on how to say it properly. First card I have here is from Anis Vargis. Or is it Annie?
It's Annie.
Okay, thank you. And Annie, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Annie Vargis. My address is 713 Lady Tesala Avenue. So the concern that I have, the, the, I live right by Lady Tesala and Lady Berry. And we signed up the house in 2020. Onto my right side, they have built the townhome, which is fine, but one good rain, that corner is flooded. The drainage is an issue. I have seen like cars sort of swim through that corner there. Now, they talked about the rezoning and 87 townhomes onto the Essex side. When they're talking about the traffic, it is on the 87 extra townhome traffic. What about the traffic on Lady Berry? Because that multifamily townhome of 2,600 units is on Lady Berry and Lady Tesala because at the PNC meeting, they clarified the entrance was at the, at Lady Berry. So if there is 2,600 units in that, in that structure, that is 2,600 cars at bare minimum. So we are looking at a traffic light right at Lady Berry and Lady Tesala. So that's like a traffic as is now from Josie or Parker, people cut across through Lady Tesala to go into Josie. And so now another 2,600 cars right there. And with all the drainage issues that we are facing, it's, and that is a thing, as far as I see now, it's a single lane either way. And there is tapestry that just opened there. So that is so much traffic. Did anybody do a traffic study? At the last PNC meeting, Mr. Stanley said they don't have any connection with American Legend. American Legend sold, I mean, did they look at their website? It very clearly says that they are the parent company. And American Legend sold all that stuff to us, saying that green space. I get the economy of it. I understand the prices. When we bought the house, of course, the prices have doubled. The townhomes that they were selling at that time was like, what, 380? Now they're selling it at 700. I get the economy of it. I understand the reduction of it. But why don't we build this multi, multi-story one right across by tapestry or by the realm? Why do it right in the middle of a development when you have on the right side and the left side townhomes? Why do it in the right, in the middle? That, 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 you know, cuts the aesthetics of it. So it should be like a uniformity. I'm not against the multi-story, but go across on the other side of Lady Berry and let, let them have townhomes. They can build all the townhomes they want in the middle. I don't have a problem with that. But all this 2,600 multi-story, multifamily one and the traffic, that is injustice. And, and I feel like, you know, that was, I mean, of course, all of us were deceived, you know, by American Legend and all the builders who said that they're going to have a green space. I get the economy of it, you know, you want, but don't build a big building. Don't, you know, have you studied the traffic? Please make sure you do a traffic study before you approve this. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, sir.
I'm Luis Freitas. I live at 757 Lady Tesala. I'm going to probably repeat a lot that was said and probably from the emails you all received. So I'm here to support my neighbors and the community to oppose the proposed rezoning in the Castle Hills neighborhood. We have several concerns that we kind of laid out on the emails that we sent to all of you. We have concerns around infrastructure. We have concerns around traffic. We have concerns around safety. We have concerns around everything that can impact the community. I don't think there were studies that were done to really support the additional traffic and the impact it would have to the neighbors. Also, as I stated, although we all kind of raised our concerns, the party never reached out to us to try to understand better our concerns and see what they could also have known. So I'm just here to, again, support my neighbors and request that, you know, further stud to be done and that you all consider a postponed decision until additional clarification can be made.
Thank you, sir. And name and address, please.
Yes. Francis Schmeling, 3549 Damsel Brook Street, Lewisville, obviously. If you don't mind, I'd like to read a little bit. I think it'd make it easier, keep it as salient as possible. I'm here to, to support my neighbors, obviously. I stand here to express my deep concern and opposition. I stand here to express my deep concern and opposition to this proposed zoning for the changes in our North Point community. As multiple-time homeowner in this community for over thirteen years, I specifically moved to Castle Hill and have stayed here because of its schools, its tight-knit community, safety, and strong home values of our neighborhood. I believe the proposed changes will have a profoundly negative impact on our community in several key aspects. You've heard my neighbors talk about property value impacts. The proposed zoning changes have the potential to lead to a decline in our property values. The introduction of multifamily, four- or five-story structures into our residential area will diminish the desirability of our homes and has the potential to negatively affect the overall market value of our great community. This will have a significant financial repercussion for all of the homeowners in our North Point community. Our environmental concerns, in my opinion, the proposed development will undoubtedly and also have a detrimental effect on our standard of living. Our community was marketed for its future green spaces and natural beauty. In addition to its connectivity, excuse me. In addition to its connectivity to walkways and parks, these changes will irrevocably alter the original plans and significantly reduce green spaces and walkways we were all sold on. As you've previously heard, a reduction of seven point three acres of green space or nearly a fifteen percent reduction. As my neighbors have stated, I am gravely concerned about the increase in traffic and the impact of additional volumes of vehicles. The homes on Lady Tesla are only forty-one feet wide, which already restricts street parking for guests of the homeowners. I'm concerned that this increase in traffic will create an unsafe traffic situation, not only for this road, but for the side roads associated with it, not only for vehicles, but also for people like myself who like to walk every day. And so those pedestrians, I believe, are potentially at risk. More importantly, the Castle Hills community is built on a strong sense of belonging and shared values. The proposed changes will disrupt the character and cohesion of our neighborhood. Contrary to the petitioners' belief that this use of land will assimilate well in the community, I cannot see how a four- or five-story commercial complex fits within the existing single-family residences. I believe the increased density and incompatible land use will erode the sense of community that we so greatly cherish. I urge you to carefully consider the potential consequences of these proposed zoning changes. And before you vote, ask yourself one question. Would you personally buy a home directly across the street from a four- or five-story multifamily complex at your front door? Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you, sir. Salita Rajwani? Name and address for the record, please.
Okay. Sorry. Hi, my name is Salita Rajwani. My address is thirty-nine oh nine Lady Betty Drive, Louisville, Texas. So I'm also here to support my neighbors in the community. And I also want to thank you for hearing us out and for your time as well. I want us, I want the city to consider tabling this and allowing us to reconsider this. I think, as we mentioned before, that we haven't been able to meet with the developer or been given the opportunity to. And so even though, you know, he's accessible, I think one of the things is that we weren't aware. When we go talk to American Legends, they tell us something else. And I think us finally getting to understand what's going to happen in our community so that our neighbors feel that we understand what's taking place is really important. I also wanted to share that this is my first home that I bought with, you know, with my family. And something that, you know, I'm taking care of my aging parents, who I want to be able to walk safely on the roads. I also have a dog. And so I wanted to send my future kids to these schools. And I invested in that when I bought a home here. And so I think that, you know, we need to understand what is the repercussions of these actions? How could it impact our schools? I'm also an educator and I understand how, you know, big class sizes can impact us too. And so having more homes, what does that mean? More multifamily homes? I think that would be something that we should also consider. Something that I was surprised to learn about is that, you know, this was part of the original plan. If this was part of the original plan, then why are our streets so small where we can't even drive safely, where we see speeding happen and congestion already? So if this was already proposed to have so many multifamily units, I think that should be reconsidered, that we're already expressing to you that our streets are congested, that we feel unsafe to drive, unsafe to park. It's really hard to have guests over. And that ultimately impacts the quality of life of the residents. I think moreover, I wanted to share that I think we should just table it so that we can understand the situation better, do traffic studies, understand what's happening with the speeding and the traffic. So that's all I wanted to share and I'll give time to my neighbors to speak. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Vivek Chabria? Name and address, please.
My name is Vivek Chabria, resident of eight one seven Lady Tesala Avenue. I'm probably one of the newest residents of the community, six months in, first house in the United States. And I purchased the house in Castle just because of the brand, right? A brand that has a sense of community living, has a sense of green space, has a sense of privacy when someone's sitting and having a cup of coffee in their backyard, right? That's why it sold me the house within Castle Hills, right? And it doesn't really matter on who my neighbors are what, but Castle Hills as a brand is what sold things to me. Now, when I'm hearing about multi-story buildings opposite my house, can I really sit in my backyard and have the same level of privacy? Probably the answer is no, because there's somebody in the apartment standing on the fifth story looking into my backyard and there's, you know, all my privacy goes away right there. The other aspect that a lot of people highlighted was around traffic, similar concerns around traffic. Something that people didn't talk about is the capacity of the schools. I'm hearing neighbors having to already drive quite a bit of a distance to get their kids to school. What, what does it mean in terms of the extended population to school capacity, right? I don't have kids yet, but that's something I have to start to think about when I'm living in a community, right? And then aspects like crime were already covered, aspects like traffic studies are already covered. And I completely echo all of these sentiments that my neighbors have. But, but overall, it's about really the sense of community living, which is why people move into a community like Castle Hills. There are apartments everywhere. Now, I don't own this land. I don't have a say in it. But, but as a resident, there's always a good amount of segregation between single-family homes, townhomes, and apartment homes, right? Having a, a one-story or a two-story, single-family home and a five-story apartment building right opposite is, is clearly not a good level of segregation, which I have not seen in the city of Louisville, as I've driven around or as a newest member of, of City of Louisville, right? But I really urge the council members to, to kind of consider everyone's concerns that we have highlighted and take into consideration everyone's kind of thought process before we make a word. But thank you for the time to speak today.
Thank you, sir. Chelsea Dougherty? Or is it Dougherty?
It's Dougherty.
Got to get better at handwriting.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Chelsea Dougherty and I live on seven forty-one Lady Tesla Avenue. Me and my husband bought this house back in 2020. We now have three beautiful children, two twin girls that are almost one, and a three-year-old son. With that being said, we live right here on Lady Tesla, which will back up to this new proposed shorten of area here. When we bought the house, yes, we very much understood that there was going to be a multifamily unit apartment complex, but there were two hundred feet of separation. Now, in these original drawings, it did look like those would be accessible to us. I am now understanding that they never will, but that's okay. At least it was two hundred feet. Now we're moving that forty feet to my children's windows. Does that mean I now can't open my children's windows? I'm not going to feel comfortable having a five-story parking garage or apartment complex looking into the privacy of my home in my backyard. We live right here on the street. I love to be outside. My kids love to be outside. I don't even feel comfortable teaching my little son how to ride a bike. Cars speed so fast down our road. I have called before and I've voiced my opinion. And I did, we did have some turnout where the police were kind of, you know, pulling people over all the time. So it's just, it's hard, especially now with the tapestry being open. We are seeing it increase. And then also with, you know, people cutting across. They now understand that it is an easier route to get from one side to the other. So most of the people speeding do not even live in our neighborhood, our community. And it's stressful. I know a lot of my neighbors as well. We go as slow as possible. The speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour. Most people are going thirty, forty, forty-five. It is extremely dangerous, especially with young toddlers and kids who run free. I have control of my children. I'm not saying that. But I'm just saying I'm worried about how close everything is going to be now. I understand the need to build apartment complexes and townhomes. I'm not, I just want to make sure we're doing it and I feel comfortable living in my own home. If not, I'm going to have to find another place. And I love my community. I love the tight-knit group. So not only about the privacy, but it goes to the schools. I also bought this home because of the great school districts. So now it's, it's hard, you know? Will my kid be one, you know, so many where before it was a smaller class group? And then, of course, I know many of the other neighbors have talked about the traffic. It's not even the traffic within the initial neighborhood. It's also all the congestion on where Josie and Maine come together on Parker. I can't purposely choose not even to go out of the neighborhood to Josie and Maine because it takes me twenty minutes to even get to one side of the neighborhood to the other because the traffic goes across that parking lot or the stoplight right there. So there's a lot of issues. And again, I am glad to learn that Mr. Stanley's open to hearing us. This is the first I've heard of it. I've lived in the neighborhood for almost four full years and I didn't even know he was part of North Point. So it's really exciting to get to learn that. And I'm happy to, you know, discuss our options more. I just want to make sure I feel safe in my own home. So thank you guys for your time today.
Thank you. Alan Gonzalez? Name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. Alan Gonzalez. I'm at eight oh five Lady Tesala. Mayor, Council, thank you for your time. I've been a proud Louisville resident for nine years. My wife and two little boys bought our first house in two ten Cielasure, seven five zero six seven zip code. We lived there for almost eight years. Then we decided to move to the prestigious Castle Hills area because we loved that it had so many family-friendly facilities. We easily pictured them swimming at one of the many pools, walking on one of many trails and Sunday morning playing basketball in the afternoons. We were even more thrilled when we found that the new construction of homes at North Point was part of Louisville, too. We decided to build a new home on eight oh five Lady Tesala Avenue and we were so excited. We had finally found a dream home. As most of the neighbors were devastated to recently learn about the rezoning plans or rezon change requests to remove green space, that open area of two hundred feet, and build a five-story garage multifamily living complex less than forty or a hundred feet from my six-year-old window, bedroom window. So we're extremely concerned, extremely concerned this will bring more traffic, noise, crime to our calm neighborhood, streets, and will completely block review and privacy. We kindly ask that the rezoning request be rejected or at the very least be changed so that the entire space north of Lady Tesala be used for single-family or townhome construction. We strongly feel that the proposed multifamily complex will change the essence of the family-friendly community the Castle Hills was created for and which we fell in love with just a few years ago. Just wanted to thank you for your generous service and your, your service to our city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Daniel Young? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Daniel Young, seven thirty-three Lady Tesla. So I live on the part of Lady Tesla where the apartments will newly be concentrated over. According to the plans, it looks to be very, very close to where the building edge would be. So I'll be facing that forty feet from the street and a five-story building, if the plans are correct, of where that's located. So I obviously have a concern about my privacy, property values, desirability of it. I moved in 2020. Obviously, as you've heard many times already, that, you know, we were persuaded to purchase here, being shown a map offering some premium green space. You know, we understand the city must grow. We understand a lot of things change, plans change from in three, four years. So I understand, you know, and I've accepted that, as many of my neighbors have. But we still have many concerns regarding how this is moving. Mainly traffic of May of this year. You know, as the community grows, as a lot of the, the pass-throughs, the, the construction in the area are completed, a lot of people are passing through our neighborhood. May of this year, my car was struck. It was parked in the street, you know, and caused about fifteen thousand dollars in damage. No big deal. We moved on. I have insurance. But, you know, that is a concern, seeing as how twenty-six hundred more units will be moving in. So obviously, that's something that we are worried about. You know, our neighborhood is full of many young families, so we have toddlers about. I've just a couple of months ago, a dog ended up in my backyard, dug its way through my backyard. So we're all pet lovers. And so, you know, we're, we're worried about the, all the traffic that's coming through. You know, we're worried about, you know, the mix of a five-story building coming in our one- or two-story homes. Obviously, no one can predict how that affects our property value, but it is a concern of ours and the, and the quality of life. So, you know, obviously, we do not have, it's not our land, the way it's used, it's, it's, it's not up to us, but we would love to have a voice. We would love to meet with the developers, to be considered, seeing as how we live here. It's a part of our community. You know, I know that, you know, I have the audience of the developers here as well. And, you know, I urge you to, you know, use your power, your position to affect the way your, the strategies and tactics that your company is using to sell these homes. So I'd just like to say that. And to the city council, I urge you to reconsider this, to table this for now, to, you know, give us a little bit more chance to take a look at this and give us a little bit more time so we can be heard as well and be offered a place at that table. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Council? Any other questions before I ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
No question, but just a, a comment, a few comments, actually.
Sure.
So one to the residents. I got, I read all your emails. I spent this weekend actually reading the ordinance, the original ordinance of the PD plan. One thing I want to let you guys know is, one person sent me the council, or actually, Mayor Pro Tim, Kelly won't be here. We're all your council members. We're not a single district. We represent everybody. You elect all of us. So we, so whenever you have questions, feel free to reach out to any of us. And that's what Patrick do, who's out of town. But we're, we're, we're going to make sure that we, we try to get this thing correct. So having been on P and Z for a while, we've, this is not our first time experiencing, you know, a clash between a developer and the neighbors. And I'm glad you guys understand that they own the property and they, and they have certain rights with that property and we, we don't want to interfere with that. However, what is bissing Mr. Kelly is communication. When I, my only question to you was, did you meet with the neighbors? And you said, well, they had your cards. That's not the same thing. So what I, what, what I would suggest is that you set up a meeting with these folks and, and you, you guys talk it out. When I got on council, we had a very, well, what I thought was a very simple gas station on five forty-four, seven eleven, that went on for seven months. I went from planning and zoning to city council. I voted on it in two different bodies. The difference was, though, the developer of that land talked to the people and they, and they worked with them to let them know. So, and I appreciate all the time and effort that you guys have put into this since ninety-six, but things have changed now and you have neighbors that, that will be affected by this and find a way to kind of work with the neighborhood that is there would be my suggestion. That's all I have, Mayor.
I have, I have some comments as well.
Absolutely.
First, I just want to clarify, most likely, the American Legend Homes is, is a separate entity than Mr. Stanley. That's correct?
Yes, I meant to write that one down on my note card and I apologize. Bright Industries is a parent company. Bright Industries owns Bright Realty and American Legend. But there is a separate president and COO and the whole staff of American Legend and Bright Realty is different. We, we do not play in the same sandbox. I build lots. I sell them to American Legend. They sell houses.
Okay. Well, I think there might be a little bit of a miscommunication because I do feel like there's, there's certainly some misunderstanding from the people who purchased the homes. And I, I was actually of the mind that it was probably just like completely separate. I understand they're separate companies, but, you know, just whatever, going forward, this is probably a good, because I've been with Brandon through this on multiple projects, either with P and Z or council, where there's a misunderstanding from the adjacent neighborhood about what is rightfully can go in the adjacent lot that's empty. So I think in the future, just having that better communication with American Legends and making sure that they are informing the people who are there selling these properties to would go a long way. I, I also just wanted to, you know, what we're really looking at is... we have an option to deny this application, which would mean that the original concept plan with more multifamily units is on the table. Now we're talking more people in the neighborhood allowed by right because that was approved already versus what's on the table now, which is closer, it's got less of a buffer, but it's less dense, it's got fewer people in the neighborhood. And I think there's maybe some, you know, we can't have our cake and eat it, too, and I think there's some compromise that, that needs to happen and some discussion that needs to go into it because I certainly think, and actually, I had no idea that the open space is not public, that, you know, but knowing that really doesn't change really what the buffering effect that, that it allows, because it sounds like American Legend actually did tell at least a few people, show them the plan, and with the trails, and some people did understand that there is going to be multifamily here one day. So in my mind, it seems like there's, you know, some compromise that maybe if you can sit down with, with the residents and work through some things and say, okay, well, what's more important here, or is it density? Is it this buffer? And come up with a plan that everybody can kind of, it's a win-win for everybody. I'm going to leave it at, actually, one more quick question. There was a traffic study that was done.
There.
When, as part of the PD, right?
There, there was a traffic impact done before Tesala, Essex, and Lady Betty got built with this density in mind.
Correct. So.
There is currently.
It was done before, but it had these land uses.
These land uses.
Yes, okay.
Okay. The one we're fixing to get to's got another traffic signal analysis for Essex and 544. That's ongoing. But these streets were designed and the infrastructure was designed to handle this density.
So, and with that in mind, I know there were several comments about needing a traffic study. Don't approve this without a traffic study. A traffic study has been done, and there's no reason to redo a traffic study, right? There's, it's already been done with this density, a larger density in mind, correct?
Correct. There was a traffic study, and of course, you know, we're not talking about an increase in density. We're actually talking about a decrease in density.
Correct.
So there would be no need for a new traffic study. The old one still covers it.
Okay. And, and that is public, that's a public document, is it not? Can we figure out a way to, to make that shareable publicly so everyone in the neighborhood has a chance to see it?
Yeah, it's a public document.
Okay, I'll yield the floor.
Mayor. I would just like to say that there is, there is a total lack of communication here. Passing the cards out's not going to cut it. I was on City Council back in 96 when we did the first agreement. There were so many meetings and talks and revisions and compromises. We didn't do that in a 30-day period or a 40-day period, 60, 90-day period. It took us months of communicating with each other and being as transparent as we could be. They're asking for a traffic study, and I just feel that if there were the meetings with the neighbors and stuff, they would have known a traffic study was already done. It would have been out there. So I, I am, I'm having a hard time knowing. I watched the P&amp;Z meeting, knowing in American Legends, it was said that they were completely separate entity. Well, they're not. They all come from the same head. One's the right hand, one's the left hand. Somebody over here is telling them something, and they're, and they're buying their houses because the left hand is telling them this, but the right hand decided to do something over here, and there's been no communication. Not that the right hand cannot make those changes, but it needs to be discussed. There needs to be a compromise. This is not something that needs to be shoved down a neighborhood's throat without good, careful communication and consideration on all parts. That's why I specifically asked about the buffer, because it sounded like you gave an extra five feet and you were going to, you were going to be generous and give an extra five feet, when actually it went from 200 to 40. But now, on the other hand, you need to realize that we're talking about a decrease in the density when you're going to townhomes. And I, I'm I'm hoping that townhomes isn't going to be a rental community of townhomes, but they're actually going to be sold. Is that correct? Crickets.
I don't build houses.
The townhomes.
I don't build houses. And, and I don't control American Legend.
Okay, I'm asking about the townhomes.
I understand. You also said that right hand, left hand, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I don't control American Legend or their salespeople or any Realtor in Castle Hills.
Sir, I'm not going to sit here and debate with you whether or not you control them. I understand that, but I also understand that it's owned by one giant company, and somebody in there knows what the other side is doing. And all I said on that end was it needed to be communicated. Everybody needs to get on the same page.
I think we need to get back to the question.
The townhomes, are they going to be a product that's going to be leased out? Or is it going to be a product that's going to be sold? Is it going to be a homeowner?
I'm developing lots and selling lots to American Legend. What they have told me is they are going to sell those homes to homeowners.
Okay, well, okay, you understand when my next comment's going to come here. And they told them that we're going to be walking trails across the street. I'm done.
We have other comments? I think, yes, sir.
Okay. We could continue this, but it sounds to me like the general consensus is that a meeting with the neighborhood is probably a good idea before council takes action on this matter.
Yes.
Mr. Stanley, I imagine that may be the case. I would like to hear from my other two council members before we go that route.
Okay.
So, so that everybody has an opportunity to communicate.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
That's okay. No, I appreciate it.
If you have a question for me.
I mean, and you've, you've already offered to speak to the community, so I think maybe if we can create something formal, but I'll, I'll tie a bow on it if you don't mind.
Fair enough.
I appreciate it.
President, I'll echo some of the same things that some of the other council members have said, similarly to what Councilmember Jones said. I had a similar case from P&amp;Z, being on P&amp;Z and then going on to City Council, the mill at Old Town, and similar, similar comments, although kind of in one direct area, but they, the result was when everybody got together, talked through this thing, they worked out a plan, and now you can see what happened at the mill at Old Town. They came together, the developer provided some concessions to the people that had residents that had comments, some of the people in the neighborhood. I think it was a very good dialogue. I appreciate everybody's comments that came here today. I, like Councilmember Jones said, I read all, I read all those emails. So we are all council members for all the city. So I think you have to take this all in context, you're going to take all this dialogue, but I also get where you're coming from as well. So I, you know, I get where you have multifamily three, you have now trying to do, technically are creating less density. So I get that side of it, too. Trust me, we, we all know about property rights, but sometimes it's, it's about listening to the other side, not, and sometimes there may not be change, but I think they want to be at least heard and then, then come to a conclusion of what's going to, the end result. It may be the same, okay? But I think they just want to, they want to be listened to.
Councilmember Troyer?
I don't have much else, much additional to say, although I did, I did drive through the neighborhood this afternoon, just so I would have a better understanding what's there. I understand the concerns, but I do, I would like to have more information, and I think the communication is extremely important at this point.
All right. So just a few points I want to point out and just kind of wrap, wrap this up. Mr. Stanley, please, you're welcome to sit. Thank you, sir. First of all, I want to, I want to thank Mr. Stanley for offering the opportunity to have more public discourse on this. I appreciate that. I, I understand that these, these draft plans and, you know, there's an underlying zoning, and then we had to quickly figure out what some draft plans with 60 days because state law. There's just yet another reason why, you know, local business is done best locally and not at the state level, but we can have that conversation in November. Regardless, that, you know, having to be able to accelerate through that process has obviously created a disconnect here in the communication today. So what I think might, and by the way, for all of you who did send in emails, we read them, I promise. We will be getting back to you if you haven't already. You'll, you'll get texts back or responses, but please continue to, to reach out. I really appreciate it. I know everybody on council does. This is how you engage in politics. It's not about yelling at somebody on Facebook. So thank you for that, okay? And guaranteed, at the end of this, we may not have everybody happy. In fact, we may have everybody unhappy. That, that's what compromise does. That's, that's how we have these conversations, but we have to have these conversations and not just sit around and, and scream in a bubble. So thank you for that. I cannot overstress you, you taking your time to be involved in the politics of your city is incredibly important. So thank you for that. With that, I do think what I'd like to see is a motion that we go ahead and continue this public hearing for a date certain of September 9th, which would be our next council meeting, if Mr. Stanley is amenable to that timeline. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. So what we'd ask you to do is, you know, schedule a public meeting, let the, let the residents know. If staff could help with that, you know, if you could help provide any city type of information that might be needed. What I don't want to see is a kicking and screaming match between neighbors. I want neighbors to work out and have a conversation about what needs to happen in the neighborhood and how it's going to work. So I'd appreciate everybody keeping that level of integrity that you kept here tonight. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we continue this public hearing to the September 9th meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and second on the table. Council, if you please vote. Motion passes unanimously. So what that means is we have until September 9th, and then we will come back with any changes, any conversations, any additions. We can continue to postpone it if the parties choose to do that, but that's what we'd ask is that between now and September 9th, y'all have a conversation and see if we can't come down to some brass tacks. So thank you for your time tonight. Item number five, public hearing. Consideration and ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance by amending ordinance number 0428-22-ZON to amend the planned development concept plan set forth in Exhibit 5B, the realm's subject to a concept plan thereto for 3.459 acres located south of the intersection of Essex Boulevard and Parker Road, FM 544, legally described as Castle Hills H3 Lot 2, Block A, as requested by Patricia Fant of McAdams on behalf of Eric Stanley of Brico Land CH LLC, the property owner, case number 24-04-2-PZ. On January 3rd, 2022, the City Council adopted the Castle Hills Plan Development District ordinance number 042822-ZON that incorporated all provisions of the Castle Hills Development Agreement along with the variances to the agreement approved since 1996. The PD allowed changes to base zoning districts and the sub-district concept plans following the zoning processes in the Unified Development Code. The applicant is requesting to change the concept plan on 3.459 acres from eight small pad sites to a mixed commercial and residential building. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial unanimously five to nothing on August 6, 2024. Since Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial, an affirmative vote of at least three-fourths of all council members of the City Council is required to approve this request. It's recommended that the City Council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above, and we do have Mr. Richard Lukey, our planning director, with a small presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Give me one moment here to get the slideshow started. Okay, again, I'll be, I'm happy to provide you a brief overview in this presentation of the proposal. And you may see that this presentation is very similar to the one from the last item, so I'll try to skip over some of the background a little bit, just to save some time here. But again, you know, Castle Hills was based upon the original 1996 agreement, and then that agreement turned into our planned development zoning in 2020, 2022. It's divided up into the three sub-districts. The realm is one of those, and the realm is further so divided into two sub-areas. And again, the concept plans are very important. They are just as important as the base zoning. The base zoning gives you the, the typical zoning requirements such as listed permitted uses, you know, what uses are allowed in that district, along with your typical setbacks and lot sizes. The concept plan complements that by bringing in a little bit more focus into the location of buildings, streets, and other accessways. And again, in the realm, it has flexibility. Minor, minor amendments to the concept plan can be approved by staff. Major modifications require the full zoning process, and that's what we, why we are here tonight. We'll keep on moving on. As far as the cap, we mentioned the 5,000 cap across Castle Hills with the additional cap of 2,000 in Crown Center, and then unlimited multifamily in the mixed-use development within the realm. Well, as far as the parks, again, there was a mandatory open space plan that was an Exhibit 2, the original PD, Crown Center, and you know, has some very rigid requirements for green space and trails. And then elsewhere, there are still open spaces within the concept plans that may not be an actual park or are accessible by the public, but some, in some cases, they do serve as buffers or utility or drainage adjustments. And again, we saw earlier the plan, the concept plan for the realm south. And again, now we are on the, the box at the lower right-hand corner, item D5, which is the concept plan for the 3.4 acres south of Parker Road where it intersects with Essex Boulevard. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of that concept plan amendment unanimously five to nothing. Again, this is just the side-by-side of the overall realm south, and then this is, this image zooms into that area. So the current concept plan illustrated five pad site commercial lots, and it did not really give a height. Most likely, buildings of this size or lots of these size are likely one to two stories. The proposed concept plan shows a single building with ground floor retail with multifamily residential above, most likely five stories. Concerns there, again, was traffic and a traffic impact analysis underway to determine if a traffic signal is warranted at the intersection of 544 and Essex Boulevard. The proximity, proximity of buildings to home, that was another theme that was brought up by area residents. This site's a little bit different than the site to the north. This one does have some buffering. The, I'll go back here, just to orient everyone. FM 544 makes kind of that sweeping curve on the north side of the site, and that's a very wide right-of-way due to the construction of the overpass over the railroad tracks. And again, since that is elevated, it takes a much wider right-of-way. That right-of-way is probably at least 200 feet, if not more. And then to the south along that red line is the railroad track, which passes under 544. That railroad track is depressed, and it is, I believe, 140 feet at its narrowest point. It does get wider in some points. The distance, the approximate distance from property line to property line is about 170 feet, and from the closest residential property line to the, to the actual building itself is about 300 feet. So that's an even greater buffer than what was proposed originally on the Lady Tesala site. And again, building height and loss of privacy and property value, and again, that 300-foot buffer is, is, lessens the impact of buildings. Building out for about five stories is usually right around 60 feet, so that's about a five times the distance than the height of the building. Some other comments and concerns were in regards to that site being disjointed from other multifamily and not in the character of the single-family area. And again, the nearest multifamily in that area is along Lady Tesala. The mixed-use type areas are much further north along the San Robert Tollway. But another factor to consider But another factor to consider in this is the fact that the proposal is, the proposed mixed use is much smaller in scale with only approximately 56 units on top of about 9,500 square feet of commercial. So again, that's much smaller compared to the other multifamily developments in the realm, which typically contain about 300 or 400 units. So this would be much smaller in scale. Summary of actions, again, the open space, there was really no change in that category. There was, current concept plan did not show any open space, and none is shown on the proposed. As far as the multifamily caps, this does add 56 additional units on top of the commercial and does not count towards the cap because of the, the realm has that ability for mixed use development that does not count towards the original 5,000 unit cap. Staff recommends approval of the request. P&amp;Z recommended denial of the request, five to zero. And with that denial in place, that does require council to have a supermajority vote in order to approve or a three-quarters vote. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and the applicant would like to make a few comments.
Any questions for Richard? Just a quick question. Is there any change or elevation difference in the ground level from one side to the other?
Yes, we have looked at that with the developer, and it's fairly level with the neighborhood to the, the closest neighborhood to the southwest. It's about maybe a four or five foot elevation, and I believe the developer does have his engineers here that can verify that.
Okay. I'll look for verification of that because I'm hearing some mumbling that that's maybe not quite right, so we'll figure it out. Thank you, Richard.
All right, let me get his presentation put back up. Give me one moment, please. Okay, Mr. Stanley, your slides are ready.
Mr. Stanley?
Thank you again, Richard.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. Okay. You're probably tired of hearing from me, and I'm kind of tired of standing up here. This is GB2, obviously, zoned for this use. There is a signal study being done right now. Preliminary indications are a signal is going to be required at Essex and 544, which in my opinion, living in that neighborhood, isn't a bad thing. It's going to affect the economics of the real estate deal, but I live in that neighborhood and I welcome it. It's difficult to turn left out of there sometimes, and anything that'll slow down 544 Speedway in my opinion is a good thing. So I think that's happening. If and when that comes back, that it's required as part of this development, we'll have to figure it out. That's the real estate business. In terms of where this project sits and what I shared with P&amp;Z was that I thought the building was 300 to 400 feet away from the gentleman in the neighborhood to my west. It in fact is 347 feet from his property line to the corner of the building, and the other nearest adjacent neighbor, a little further yet, 362. His current finished floor elevation of his pad, according to our drawings, is an elevation of 532 feet, and our building pad for that proposed project is 528 feet, so we would start four feet below his current grade. There are a number of trees, both on the neighborhoods, over a football field away, the neighborhood side of the railroad track, as well as on this site's side of the railroad track. And I'm asking for consideration here, this is over a football field away, and isn't a zoning change, it's a concept plan modification. There isn't anything in the current concept plan that would stop five-story buildings being on each one of those little pads. It looks kind of weird, but certainly could be done, and this combines them into a product that I think can be unique and be interesting and add a little retail there for me and my neighbors to be able to enjoy, particularly with a signal we get back and forth across the street. Sorry. Any questions?
Any questions from council? Thank you, Mr. Stanley. I have a few quick emails to read into the record on this one, so we received an email from Georgia Smiley, 9:02 a.m. on the 19th. In opposition, "I'm not in favor of the proposed usage change from retail to retail multifamily on the 3.459 acre section south of Parker Road. A five-story building would be visible to the homeowners in the reserve, and in my opinion, negatively affect the residents' property values and future ability to sell. In addition, in my opinion, the ingress and egress to and from this property along Parker Road is very dangerous, especially for vehicles going east over the bridge." Next comment, Mr. Eric Miller, 8:17, 10:37 a.m. Oppose, "I think the idea of having multifamily units on a 3.459 acre site located south of the intersection of Essex Boulevard and Parker Road, FM 544, will result in significant problems with traffic and accidents. This is a busy area and there are blind spots coming over the hill. This is such a small piece of land that putting a large number of housing units in this area will create significant problems." Mr. Thomas Roach, 8:19, 2:09 p.m. Oppose, "We oppose the zoning change for the same reasons cited by our neighbors. In addition, there is a history of unstable soil in close proximity. The area of Hundred Nights Homes 2820, 2816, 2812, and 2808 had major landslides in 2007, 2015, and 2020. A properly engineered fix was implemented in 2020. If a slide occurred on the subject lot, it could impact buildings in the active rail line, which is less than 100 feet away. Approving a five-story building does not seem like a good idea." Ken Eastburn, 8:18, 7:28 p.m. Oppose, "Oppose for all the reasons already stated by others. Privacy concerns, property value negatively impacted, increased traffic on Parker Road, safety issues with traffic entering and exiting at the top of the hill, et cetera. Please do not approve this bad proposal." Thank you. Rick Vidal, 8:18, 1:11 p.m. "We oppose construction of multi-story multifamily structure on the parcel. The original planned use of single-story garden-style office-retail structures. The proposed change is inappropriate use due to diminished property values to nearby homes, loss of privacy, noise, and increased traffic on Parker Road where speed congestion of sightlines are already an issue. Attached image demonstrates what the proposed structure would do to our neighborhood." Falcon Garcia, 8:16, 4:50 p.m. "We oppose any building behind our home in the reserve section of Castle Hills. We live directly behind the proposed multifamily facility and hope to keep this section of Parker Road free of big construction, and will have negative impact on our property values and sightlines, and views will be compromised, not to mention the traffic and high-speed cards already drive on Parker Road behind our home." Patricia Hoff, 8:16, 4:50 p.m. "I'm not in favor of any development of this property, which appears to be directly behind my residence on Hundred Nights Drive in the reserve section of Castle Hills. I believe the development of this land, especially a multi-story apartment building, would negatively impact my property value and that of my neighbors, as well as take away from the aesthetics and view of our residences. It was this privacy and back of me that drew me to live here in the first place. Please deny the proposal." William Priest, 8:19, 2:48 p.m. "We oppose construction of a multi-story commercial structure on this parcel. The original planned use for single-story garden-style office-retail structures. The proposed change is inappropriate use due to diminished property values to nearby homes, loss of privacy, noise, and increased traffic on Parker Road where speed congestion of sightlines were always a concern. Bad idea to change the ordinance." Charles Hummer, 8:19, 2:48 p.m. "We oppose the zoning change. It will negatively impact our property, privacy, and neighborhood aesthetics. Please consider, too, the safety issues of having an entrance just below the crest of the hill, not the west. The size and location of the site make it unsuitable for any type of construction project. Please deny the zoning change." Those are all the email ones written into the record. I will say that Councilman Kelly also sent me a text on, or an email on all of these, that he would love to see a public comment as well, a little additional public comment time. So if we want to do that as well on this one, that he would be in favor of that. I do have three folks who filled out comment cards, but they also had website comments that I just read into the record. They are more than welcome, of course, to come speak, but I would encourage you to only add to what you already put on the email and not reread your email, if that's okay. First up, I've got Georgia Smiley. Name and address for the record, please.
Georgia Smiley, 401 Crown of Gold. Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Georgia Smiley, and I live in the Reserve Neighborhood within the Castle Hills Master Plan Development. I want to clarify that I understand the owner of the property in question is Braco Land CH LLC. I also understand the relationship between Braco Lands and the developer of Castle Hills, and we all know that they are one and the same, and I will refer to them interchangeably within my comments. When I moved into the Reserve Neighborhood many years ago, it was prior to the annexation of the city with the city of Louisville. At first, I had no idea what that would mean, and I was a little nervous about how our master plan community would be affected, but having lived with the annexation now for almost three years, I must say that I couldn't be more pleased, especially with all the parks and green spaces within the Castle Hills community. The city has maintained our neighborhood parks better than before and have made numerous enhancements which have been great in my opinion. This comment is important, as I will talk about later in my comments, about how our current developer takes care of the parks that they are still responsible for. The developer is requesting a change in use. Mr. Stanley just said it was no change in zoning. I'm a little confused because I think it is a zoning change request in use anyway. It is currently zoned for retail, but he wants retail and multifamily, so that's a change in my part. So when the developer creates a wonderful community such as Castle Hills, the developer goes through a tremendous amount of thought process and planning for every parcel of land that will be developed and then presents those plans to the city for approval. Once the approval process happens and development begins, homeowners such as myself are then sold on what the overall plan will look like before, during, and after completion of all the development. Now this developer is asking for a change in use of this parcel of land to include a multi-story building for multifamily. This type of building is inappropriate for this parcel of land, and it does not fit within the existing residential aesthetics. This parcel of land was also never intended to house a multi-story building that would look onto the backyards of existing homes. It was plotted as eight little garden sites or whatever. Also, we talked about the ingress and egress off of Parker Road. It's dangerous, vehicles going over the east side of the bridge, it's a racetrack on that road. While the speed limit is posted at 50, I can guarantee you the road itself leads it to very high rates of speed. This developer wants to continue to change the original plans of the master plan development, even with the other zoning change requests for the acreage in the Castle Hills North Neighborhood, and we're going to talk about those parks in a minute because those will remain private. This developer made promises to all the homeowners when they began developing the land, and those promises included all the parks and green spaces that we all love and enjoy and what brings people and families to Castle Hills in Louisville. Those promises also included that the three-and-a-half acre parcel of land would be a retail site with garden-style buildings and not a multi-story building. This developer has also promised to maintain the parks within the master plan development that were not part of the annexation to the city, such as our Boot Lake Park, this is my example, which is located within our gated community and still maintained by the HOA, the master HOA. The lights along our walking paths have been in need of repair for years, and the developer refuses to repair or replace them. Our fountains within our lake at Boot Park are also in need of repair, and the developer refuses to repair that as well. Recent storms destroyed our gazebo in the park, and I'm really not sure what the developer is going to do about that. So the developer continues to break promises to the residents of Castle Hills. However, it should be noted that as the developer continues to raise my HOA dues every year, and they no longer have to maintain all those parks that the city of Louisville now takes care of. The three, and the three-and-a-half acres is up for sale, so why is the developer requesting a change in use if they're going to sell it? To me, it seems likely that the developer knows the land is more valuable for residential use and because of the shape of that parcel of land. He's wanting to maximize a land building by putting a five-story building. This gives the appearance that the developer seems only interested in more money in the pocket of the developer and not interested in living up to the previous promises or even what is in the best interest of the community. Should this request be approved, this type of building could negatively affect the values of our homes within the reserve. As you can tell, I oppose this request to change the use as requested by the developer, and it is my understanding that the P&amp;Z Commission also recommended denial of the developer's request. I respectfully request the City Council to also deny this request for a change in use. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Patricia Hoff. I live at 2733 Hundred Nights Drive, and I will be brief because I will yield my time to my neighbor Rick, who's going to speak further on this. But my main concern is living in the reserve. It is a gated community. I've lived here for 15 years, and I bought there because it's gated and I felt safe, and the aesthetics were beautiful, Castle Hills was beautiful, and I believe that putting a five-story building right over the wall from where we are is going to be able to look directly into our windows, into our houses, into our yards, and I will likely no longer feel safe there. There was a slide that I saw that said, "Property values cannot be determined, they're complicated." I agree, it is complicated, but I don't think there can be any disagreement that property values will go in the wrong direction for the homeowners. They'll go down because of this, because people, given a choice of where they want to live, will not want to live overlooking a five-story multifamily unit on a small piece of land with a lot of parking spaces and traffic. So I think safety is an issue, property values are an issue, aesthetics are an issue, and as Georgia mentioned, promises by the developer, I think, are also an issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rick Vidal?
Thank you, Patty, for, I hope I can use some of her time that she didn't use because it's going to be hard to get this in in five minutes. Thank you, council, Mr. Mayor, for allowing us to speak here. I think one thing that's very evident is that there is a unanimous opinion here, and the unanimous opinion is that it's, that nobody wants to see this happen adjacent to our homes. This proposal comes before the council, having been unanimously denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So again, that speaks to, I think, the general opinion of this proposed change. You know, something else is that, yes, Castle Hills gave the opportunity to bring value to Louisville. It's the homeowners here in Louisville who bring value to Louisville. That's where it comes from. So, you know, the property owners, us, my neighbors here, that are just, I mean, we're beside ourselves because this has come up, and, you know, it comes down to appropriate use of property. This piece of property did not exist prior to 2018. It was on the north side of Parker Road. Parker Road was realigned. It's now on the south side of Parker Road, just literally right across the wall from where our homes are. If, you know, with that change, and also I think that brings up, I wish we could put a map up here, there's one right here I'm looking at, but with that change, now I understand the notice, when it went out, this was like one line in a two-page notice or three-page notice about the zoning and planned use change. All of us unanimously in our neighborhood got that notice, we looked at it, oh, this has nothing to do with us, went straight in the trash. Well, it did, and it was just so happened that I was, I did a drive-by to see, why did I get this notice? I went and looked at the property in the realm a half mile from my home. On the way home, I happened to come to the intersection of Essex and 544. I looked up, and there is a sign out there in front of this property that says it's a proposed zoning change. I called the number, talked to the zoning staff, extremely helpful people, very friendly. The lady I spoke to gave me a lot of information, a lot of the tools that you have available, you know, on your website, that opened my eyes significantly. And she said, oh, by the way, you're in luck. The meeting is tomorrow night. So that was Monday, two weeks ago, I guess, the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. I didn't have time to talk to my neighbors or anything else. I came by myself, and I think I made an impression on them because, again, they unanimously decided to deny that request. You know, there's a lot of things here that are wrong with this. Number one, you know, for us, the property owners, the residents that back up to that, we live in a gated community, we chose to live there because of the privacy, because of the pace of life, the quiet nature of it, and, you know, yes, there's a railroad track right behind our house. Well, it's so far down below grade that my home office is on the second floor, overlooks my alley right over the wall. I cannot see the trains go by. I can barely hear them, but I can't even see them go by, so that's totally out of the way. Yes, that property is 15 feet higher than my property. Now, this is the first I've heard that it's going to be, the proposed building is going to be brought down, but for my to be brought down, but for my second-story window, I am looking directly across the top of that property, so that's from my second story, second floor, that's where the 15 feet is. And it shows up on your, um, your maps that you have, you know, online as well. So, you know, the loss of privacy is significant. We have an eight-foot privacy fence in our backyard. We're one of the few homes in Castle Hills, or not in Castle Hills, but in the, the, uh, Reserve, that has a very useful backyard, and we entertain back there, we enjoy our time back there. Um, eight-foot privacy fence. I've got 15-foot trees across the back of my lot. There are not trees, there's not a fence high enough to keep prying eyes from a five or six-story building, actually, one story of retail, five of, of apartments, uh, from looking straight into our backyards. Ms. Hoff mentioned that same thing, she's my next-door neighbor, um, looking straight into our yards, zero privacy. Not only that, from our kitchen, well within our home, looking out our back windows, that's all you're going to see. And guess what? That's all they're going to see, is looking right into my home. So, you know, do we live with our blinds closed all the time? That's going to be the only choice we have. Um, let me see here. You know, one of the things in, you know, the issue of crime has been brought up, do we really need more apartments? There, there are so many new apartment buildings going up here in the Castle Hills development, the realm, and that's, you know, this little sliver is included in the realm because of the realignment of 544. Um, if it, you know, if 544 is still between us and the realm, wouldn't be that much of a problem, it would still be a problem, but not as big, but because of the realignment, now that is in our backyard. But if you just, I don't know, none of y'all have, um, the Next Door app, you have Ring, um, those are lighting up my phone on a daily basis, uh, did you hear the gunshots? Did you, what was that noise? Oh, there's somebody stealing packages from all these apartment complexes right here in Lewisville, right here in Castle Hills, constantly, every day, multiple, multiple, multiple alerts. So, you know, having that right across, it's across the wall, but it's right next door, and it's people who are looking in to my home, so that's a major concern. That's, you know, and again, goes back to the appropriate use of the property. Traffic, I think we've already talked, on all the, uh, messages that you've had, traffic on 544 is dangerous. Just, just go out there and look at all the skid marks on the, on the road, all the damage to the bridge over the railroad tracks, um, all the crashes out there, the busted-up curbs from cars going over the curb at 50, 60 miles an hour, probably more like 60 and 70 miles an hour. Um, frankly, it's a racetrack. Um, my office, my home office is right there, I see them flying by all day long. Put a traffic light up, might help, I think it's going to be a source of, uh, accidents, but, uh, putting that in there. Still got a little bit of time here. Um, so traffic is definitely a concern, an issue, but not also the congestion. If you saw on the plot map, the proposed plot map, it is a building that, I forget the dimensions, I had it written down somewhere, I think, I think it's on here, but it's surrounded by parking, double level of parking. So yes, the building itself is, what do you say, 300, 347.7 feet from my back fence. The parking lot is 140 feet from my back fence, and so I'm going to be looking at bumpers, cars parked, headlights shining in my windows at night, um, noise, who knows what else out there. Um, and that's unanimous with all of the neighbors here. And, you know, that's something that, again, that we just did not, that's, we didn't bargain for that. And, um, you know, the biggest thing is the loss of our property values. We, our homes are significant investments for all of us. Many of us, we've, we've been in this house for three years, and we've made a lot of improvements because we love our home, we love our yard, and we want, we like to use it. A lot of these folks have been here for 15 years or since the development was, was created, and how do you make up for that? I mean, it's, the developer, he comes out ahead. Property owners, we come out behind. How do we make that up? There's no way. And how do you sell your home when you're in the shadow of a five-story or six-story building? It's just, it just can't happen. So, you know, it, it comes down to, if there's an airport and I build a home next to the airport, I've got no right to complain about the noise. What's happening here is they're building an airport next to me, and so we should have a voice, and it should be a very loud voice. One of the things that caught my attention was that this process for changing zoning, changing planned use is not easy. Hell, no, it's not easy. It shouldn't be easy. It should be very difficult. And, you know, we bought our home, the sign, the for-sale sign, I think somebody mentioned that, property is for sale. Um, the for-sale sign says retail, doesn't say anything about retail with five-story apartment on top of it. Um, you know, if I hadn't just luckily saw that, seen that sign, um, and not contacted the city, we wouldn't be here having this conversation. It would have flown through just as an afterthought, nobody would have said anything. So, you know, not so, not only is the planned use change inappropriate for that location, that piece of property, this, this irregularly shaped sliver of property that was created when they realigned the road, it's, you know, perhaps I think we need to even consider rezoning, rezoning that property away from that multifamily and put, zone it for something that is appropriate, that takes into consideration the residents that live right adjacent to it, that doesn't damage their property values, maybe brings value, maybe increases value of our homes. So, you know, that's what I'm saying here today. I appreciate your time and for listening to us, and again, I want to reiterate that this proposal came to the city council, having been unanimously denied by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, um, any questions, comments, concerns? Um, we have a couple of options here. We can, uh, move to close, or we can motion to continue the public hearing.
I, I have, I have some comments and maybe even a question for Richard. Um, I couldn't agree more with what I've heard tonight about the concerns about this, this building being there. I get it, and I don't disagree at all. What my concern is, is that the option on the table is to deny this request, and so what does that mean? If we deny this request, it is still zoned GB, right?
General, general business two.
Okay, so that allows multifamily on top, right?
Yes, by right.
Really, what we're talking about is a form. This is not about a use, because the use of retail on the bottom with multifamily above is allowed by right. If we deny this, they are allowed to build that by right, correct?
Correct.
So the difference is that instead of building one large building, it would be potentially six large buildings that are all the same height, correct?
Correct.
And that would be allowed with no zone change whatsoever, with what is the existing zoning in place right now with no concept change at all. They can still build a building just as tall, just five or six smaller buildings in size, in perimeter, but same height.
Correct.
That's correct. So that is where my problem is, because no matter what we do here, I can't prevent a retail building that is five stories of multifamily above it, no matter what we do, because it's already allowed. I mean, it's already allowed. Yes?
It's only four over the retail.
Okay, so five total, four, so regardless of what we do, though, if we deny it, he can still build the same thing, just in smaller sections. And so that is where, that's...
That's, that's kind of what I was saying, is that I think what true solution is, is rezone this property, not change the property plan.
So, so here's the thing with rezoning.
We can't do, we can't initiate that.
If I take it and create lower volume, value for him, he gets to sue me, we will lose, and we will pay that money, and then he'll get to build what he wants.
I understand.
That's the, that's the challenge with the property rights state.
There's one more thing here, and that says that just because you can, doesn't mean you should.
That's fair.
And that's where the appropriate use, and I think if we have a developer that has a conscience, then we should really look at what should be done rather than what can be done. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and the issue is, I, I think what I'm getting at is that my issue is that I can't force that to happen. No matter what I vote tonight, I can't force that to happen. So I really don't know what the best option is, to deny or not. I, I would love to hear the thoughts of everyone else up here.
So you're looking at me, so?
I think this needs to be, to me, and Eric agreed, I think this needs to be continued further, and maybe, maybe a discussion, a dialogue could happen along with the other one together.
Any other comments?
Very...
I, I don't have a motion yet.
I was just going to say, very similar to, to the first, I, you gotta, you gotta take some time to talk to the folks and see what's, what's acceptable there. I mean, obviously, you, by right, you can do some things there, but being a good neighbor, and I'm sure that's what you want to do, you know, you guys, you've gotta improve your communication game around any areas that you're developing, because it's not open land like it was before.
And I'm, I hear you, but I'm 350 feet away from a property line to an edge of a building. I don't know how to get it any better than that. I, I, to your point, Councilwoman Green, it, this could go five stories, it could go six stories, it could go seven stories, it could go eight stories. I'm only trying to do one on the bottom, four up, as an efficient design. The parking lot's going to be a parking lot, whether it's this project or something else, up to the property line, whether it's the multiple buildings or a single building. We pushed this building on the site, kind of as far away as we could, still make it designed right. I'm happy to set up another meeting with these neighbors, like the one with the other neighbors, but I don't know what I give here. Not sure what I give in the other, but I sure as heck don't know what I give here with a football field plus in separation and a railroad track. I mean, I, sorry, I, I don't have to solve that piece.
Mr. Meredith, you have a question, comment? Counsel?
I think we need to move the question here.
Well, at this point, I'm, I'm looking for a motion. If you'd like to address, I need you to come back up. I'll let you ask one question.
Oh.
So I'm trying to understand the original, like, your comment about it's, the concept right now is like eight little garden buildings, and, well, he could just put eight tall stor- eight tall buildings, is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is that what the concept shows, to my understanding, is it really doesn't even show any buildings on it, it just shows kind of, it shows lots. So within that, so there's a base zoning, which is the GB2, which allows the built, the, up to eight stories, is it not, Richard? It allows retail on the bottom and then multifamily on top, and the concept plan doesn't show any buildings, so it just shows lots. So what that would mean would, would be that he can put a building on each one of those lots that can go up to eight stories.
But they would have parking, he would, he couldn't do that because there wouldn't be enough parking on the three and a half acres, he couldn't put that...
It would be a challenge for sure.
Yeah, he couldn't do it unless he built underground parking garage or whatever.
And I don't, I don't want to get into a debate, so I'd appreciate you just, with the question, but...
He, but it's, it's already zoned, so what are we here for in the first place? If it's already zoned for residential, and there's a sign out there that says...
It's a concept plan revision, is what it is.
It's a concept plan revision that we have to approve, or it stays with the same...
Or it goes back to what he has.
Right.
Okay.
And I'm going to move for denial.
I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, yeah, no, there you go, I have to have that motion first.
Oh, well, let me, uh, close the public hearing first.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those, well, here, we can go ahead and vote right here. I have a motion to close, five to nothing. The public hearing is now closed?
Now I move for denial.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Cade and Brandon Jones. All those in favor of denying, please, please vote. Uh, vote is four to one to deny.
Two abstaining.
That's, so motion passes. Item six. Public hearing. Consideration ordinance, amending ordinance 042822-ZON by amending section five, the realm sub-district subsection VE to include additional specific landscape standards in the realm sub-district, and section six, public and private improvements, subsection six A2K, to remove the requirement for alleys in all detached and attached single-family residential zoning districts where lots average less than 10,000 square feet. Castle Hills Plan Development Ordinance 042822-ZON allows for text amendments following the same process as text amendments to the Unified Development Code. As market conditions evolve and Castle Hills approaches build-out, some changes are being requested to clarify landscaping requirements in the realm sub-district and to allow for denser front entry units. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, five to nothing on August 6, 2024. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Richard Ludke, our planning director, is available for questions, and public hearing is now open. Do we have any comments or questions? Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes, five to nothing. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
City attorney?
This is an ordinance of Lewisville City Council, amending ordinance 0428-22-ZON by amending section five, the realm sub-district, subsections five E1 and five E2, to include additional specific landscape standards in the realm sub-district, and section six, public and private improvements, subsection six AIIK, to remove the requirement for alleys in all detached and attached single-family residential zoning districts where lots average less than 10,000 square feet, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date declaring it emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes, five to nothing. Item E, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the ordinance, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking actions on items not listed on the agenda. Action will only be taken at a future meeting. City secretary, do we have any comments for visitor, citizen?
No, sir, we should not.
All right, thank you. Moving on, item F, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council, being enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal on item, a speaker card or a comment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Deputy Mayor Pro-Tim Cade will be refused from item F10, so if we could, uh, have a motion to pull this, item 10, from the consent agenda. Do we have any comments or... Do we have any comments or ecomments on consent?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item number F ten.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Approval of a professional services agreement with Teague, Knoll, and Perkins Incorporated in the amount of $198,555 for design services related to the Valley Vista and Poindexter Street drainage improvements and authorization for the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement. The city council previously approved a professional services agreement for the Teague, Knoll, and Perkins Incorporated to perform a drainage analysis to determine the improvements needed to alleviate flooding issues at the intersection of Camelot Drive and Littleden Drive in the Valley Vista one subdivision. Staff has selected Teague, Knoll, and Perkins Incorporated to prepare a drainage at design to improve the Valley Vista sewer system based on the findings in the completed drainage analysis and to complete a drainage design to enclose an open ditch on the west side of Poindexter Street just south of High School Drive. Funding is available in the Drainage Improvement Capital Project. It's recommended that the city council approve the agreement as set forth in the caption above and authorize the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement.
Move to approve the agreement and authorize the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Item passes four to nothing. Councilmember Cade?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Item G fourteen, consideration of one alternative standard associated with landscaping for proposed industrial warehouse on approximately 6.56 acres out of the Peter Harmison survey, abstract number oh six oh four, located on the south corner of State Highway one twenty one business and Vista Ridge Mall Drive Zone Light Industrial District as requested by Ryan Wirch on behalf of C O P Lovett one twenty one Logistics Park LLC, the property owner, twenty four oh seven ten A L T S T D. During the Platten Engineering Site Plan Review for the proposed Lovett Industrial Development, several unique site factors and subsequent areas requiring an alternative standard were identified, leading to the alternative standard request to reduce the required 30-foot contiguous landscape buffer area by up to 90% and place enhancing materials and alternative landscaping in specific areas. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval for it, nothing on August sixth, 2024, and it is recommended that the city council approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption above. Richard Lutke is available for questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the alternate standard as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Item passes five to nothing. Item fifteen, consideration of acceptance of the resignation of Amy Farrelli, declaring a vacancy exists in appointment to the educator position on the arts advisory board. One seat on the arts advisory board is reserved by ordinance for an art educator. That position is currently vacant. An application has been received from Ian O'Brien, who works for Lewisville Independent School District as an art teacher at Creekside Elementary School. It's recommended that the city council appoint Ian O'Brien to the arts advisory board as set forth in the caption above. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to accept the resignation of Amy, Amy Farrelli, declare a vacancy exists and appoint Ian O'Brien to the arts advisory board as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item sixteen, consideration of ordinance amending City of Lewisville ordinance four one nine seven dash oh eight dash two oh one five, which establish a wastewater main extension project and establish associated extension fees by expanding the sanitary sewer drainage basin, expanding the sanitary sewer drainage basin for the wastewater main extension project, providing for repealer, providing severability, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. City council approved an ordinance in August 2015 that provides for the collection of extension fees from upstream developers and payment of those fees to Prestige Garage LLC, the downstream developer, to reimburse the downstream developer for a sanitary sewer extension he provided to benefit his and other upstream properties. The 2015 ordinance was based on section 16.203 dash five of the Lewisville City Code that provides program procedures to establish a wastewater main extension ordinance. The ordinance established a reimbursement to the developer on a prorated share for the costs associated with the project from future users in the sewer shed desiring to tie onto the sanitary sewer. The amendment expands the size of the sewer drainage basin serving the extended sanitary sewer. It's recommended that the city council approve the amended ordinance as set forth in the caption, and we have David Salmon, our city engineer, available for questions. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of Lewisville City Council amending City of Lewisville ordinance number four one nine seven dash zero eight dash 2015 by expanding the sanitary sewer basin area covered by the Elm Fork Sanitary Sewer Phase Three Project Extension Program established therein and amending extension fees set forth in that program, providing for repealer severability and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item seventeen, consideration of ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, chapter fifteen, traffic and vehicles, article four, parking regulations of the Lewisville City Code by adding new section fifteen dash one twenty seven point five, limited parking on specific streets during specific hours and limiting parking on the north side of Southwest parky from, parkway from 40 feet east of the center line of Kia Drive to 240 feet east of the center line of Kia Drive to two hours between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date in declaring an emergency. With the construction of Glory Park, the Parks and Recreation Department has requested the parking along Southwest Parkway in front of Glory Park be limited to two-hour parking during park operating hours. To ensure the maximum number of users can access these spots and to prevent long-term parking, staff recommends limiting the parking time to two hours during park operation hours from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. and it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. David Salmon, our city engineer, is available for questions. If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending chapter fifteen, traffic and vehicles, article six, parking regulations, sorry, article four, parking regulations of the Lewisville City Code by adding a new section fifteen dash one two seven five, limited parking on specific streets during specific hours and limiting parking on the north side of Southwest Parkway from 40 feet east of the central line of Kia Drive to 240 feet east of the central line, center line of Kia Drive to two hours between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item eighteen, consideration of ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, chapter fifteen, article four, section fifteen dash one twenty six, stopping, standing, or parking prohibited on specific streets by prohibited parking on the east side of McCart Drive from the intersection of Country Ridge Road to 150 feet south of the intersection of Country Ridge Road, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date and declaring an emergency. McCart Drive provides access to Lewisville Elementary School. City staff has received multiple complaints from residents, school staff, and parents about vehicles parking on both sides of McCart Drive near the intersection of Country Ridge Road. Providing for no parking on the east side of McCart Drive from the intersection of Country Ridge Road to 150 feet south of the intersection of Country Ridge Road along the inside curve will increase the safety of the pedestrians and drivers and provides more room for turning vehicles to make the maneuver safely. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. David Salmon, our city engineer, is available for questions. Counsel, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the Lewisville City Code, chapter fifteen, section fifteen dash one two six, stopping, standing, or parking prohibited on specific streets by prohibiting parking on the east side of McCart Drive from the intersection of Country Ridge Road to 150 feet south of the intersection of Country Ridge Road, providing for repealer severability, penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Counsel, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item H, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. So we're gonna start to my right. Councilmember Meredith, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, Mayor, I've got a couple of library activities for the week booked for Murder Book Club for adults Tuesday, August 20th, two to three p.m., small conference room, no registration required. Animakers Anime Plus Makers Plus Club for Teens, 13 to 18, Thursday, August 22nd, six to seven thirty p.m. The Hive Makers Face, no registration is required. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
Yes, I have several activities at the Lewisville Grand Theater. First of all, performances, A Whale of a Band concert presented by Metropolitan Winds on September, September 14th. Elvis Gospel and Beyond presented by Stardom Entertainment on September 15th. Acoustic jam sessions every Friday night, as always, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. Activities, we have a neighborhood grant workshop presented by the City of Lewisville on August 20th. Conversations with artists, what were they thinking, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, August 25th. And there are two, there are a number of exhibitions currently or in the progress. Cowboys and Critters presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville going on through August 24th. The Buck and Curry Show presented by the City of Lewisville through August. Fresh Ideas 2023 Winter and, and Ariel Bogan Lap of Luxury presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, August 17th through September 14th. And there is an opening reception on the 17th of August. And Patterns and Textures presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, August 17th through September 14th, with an opening reception on August 17th. And that is my report.
Thank you, sir. City secretary?
No report, Mayor.
Mr. Lutke? Ms. Samples? Moving away? Oh, we're down to the lake level.
Lake level, 100%. Elevation is 522.08.
Nothing, chief? Nothing, chief?
This one's been a mare of a ton, so I'll be brief. I just wanted to remind everybody that school is back in session and I think people have kind of forgotten, you know, over the summer, how we handle the school traffic and particularly the buses, seeing a lot of people running past the buses when they are stopped and they have their stop sign out. And correct me if I'm wrong here, but if, if you're on a divided street and the bus is on the opposite side, you don't have to stop. But if you're on an undivided street, regardless, you have to stop no matter which way you're going. Is that correct? So I know the police department usually posts something on social media every time school starts again, just to remind people. I haven't seen it yet, but.
I saw it post today.
Oh, you saw it today? I'd missed it. Okay.
There was a good one today.
Yeah, there was. It was a video.
I saw, I saw the video of the enforcement. That's wonderful. They also usually do a little graphic, which is really helpful, too, because I think it can cause problems if you're on the opposite side of a divided street and you're stopping when you're not supposed to. That can cause, that can cause an accident as well. So just a reminder and I'll yield.
Councilmember Jones?
I think I've said enough for today. The only thing I will say, if you don't have kids like I do, leave before the schools don't start. It's amazingly clear out there at six in the morning.
It really is.
I'd like to say that I'm, I'm hitting Railroad and Purnell every morning. And if I get there before the officer is set up in the parking lot across the street, they just, they're just gone. They're just going. And it is so funny because you know, when he's there, everybody stops at that line and then they go across. It's just amazing. Can we get a decoy car just set up over there? That's all I have. I'm too long for reports.
City manager?
All right. I have, in the interest of time in the evening, I have no additional reports. We do have item J, closed section, so we'll need to step into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, subchapter D, section 551.071, consultation with attorney legal issues related to the Fair Housing Act 42 U.S.C., section 3601, and approved variances to chapter three, animals, article three, division two, section three dash eighty five, same agricultural animals, articles, article five, section three, one fifty one, restricted premises, and article six, section three dash one fifty six, location number and types of chickens allowed at one two nine two Martian Place, section 551.072, real estate, property acquisition, section 521.087, economic development, deliberation regarding economic negotiations. We reserve the right to close for any of those and we are in closed session.
Counsel, is there any action to be taken from closed session?
Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager or her designee to take all actions necessary to purchase the property located at 642 South Mill Street in Lewisville, Denton County, Texas for $225,000.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. As there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we stand adjourned.
I'm going to bed now.
Ten fourteen.